Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for October 4th, 2022. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Can't get my mic. Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here, thank you very much. Now, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, moving ahead to item number three, the TZD special presentation. Chief Tate, welcome.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. It's always nice and fun to stand up and brag about your staff and highlight the good work that they do. And tonight, we're joined, very honored to be joined, by Bill Hamas, our regional TZD coordinator, and Director Michael Hansen of the Office of Traffic Safety. So, it means a lot that both of you are here as well. To highlight a traffic stop that Officer Caitlin Schumacher did on August 11th this summer, it was a taillight out that caught her attention. And after running the plate, noticing that there was an active protection order for the male and female occupants of the vehicle, she pulled it over and began questioning the driver, who was not cooperative, not giving the right name. Those instincts kicked in, and she kept pushing, removed the one party from the vehicle, and eventually was able to identify through just a tremendous investigation, thorough investigation, who this driver was, who happened to have a warrant out of Pine County for third-degree murder. That murderer was the result of this individual's drug dealing of fentanyl that wound up killing someone. She didn't just stop there and take him to jail. After searching the car, she also located just over 100 grams of fentanyl-laced cocaine as well, with a street value of somewhere between $8,000 and $10,000 on that. So, I have no doubt with what this individual had done in the past, and the amount that he was carrying that day, and the amount of fentanyl that was there, her actions probably saved multiple overdoses, especially where this individual was heading. So, very, very proud of what we all think is a routine traffic stop. If everything would have been fine, she'd have given a lights-on voucher and waved at them goodbye. But again, those instincts kicked in, and this is what we want our folks to do. And she knew something wasn't right, and she got a very, very dangerous person off our streets here in Shakopee. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Michael Hansen of the Office of Traffic Safety for a few comments.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Chief Tate. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. This is the really fun part of my job, although a lot of my job is really fun. I have the privilege of serving as the Director for the Department of Public Safety's Office of Traffic Safety. I spent about 33-plus years in law enforcement prior to being appointed to this position. And so, I have a deep appreciation and really a strong sense of gratitude for our brothers and sisters in law enforcement when they go out there and they do really excellent work. And on occasion, I get the privilege of coming up and to address a council and law enforcement leadership and to recognize these officers for this great work. And not to belabor, you know, what Chief Tate commented on, this really is lifesaving police work. And traffic law enforcement is law enforcement. Traffic safety is public safety. It starts with a taillight out, and it winds up with a murderer behind bars. And this is just the most recent example of how really good, effective police work connected to traffic safety that nexus really does exist in all of our communities. So, it is my pleasure to present, Caitlin, do you want to step up here, please? It is my pleasure to present Caitlin with a certificate and accommodation from the Department of Public Safety's Office of Traffic Safety. And I'll just read the citation for you. "For exceptional performance and dedicated hours of hard work towards achieving the goal of keeping roadways safer, your efforts, Officer Schumacher, are making a difference to the safety of the citizens of the City of Shakopee and Scott County and the state of Minnesota." I added a couple of words in there. "The Office of Traffic Safety awards Officer Schumacher a challenge coin, which must be earned." We don't hand these out, we earn them, "for her work in the traffic safety arena and her excellent police work." So, Officer Schumacher, congratulations. And with that, I think... I think my able law enforcement liaison might have a couple more words to share with you. Go ahead.
Welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. And I'll keep this real short. But this is part of my job as well, to recognize what we call lifesaving police work, and clearly. You know, I can't sit here and tell you tonight that once she took this individual off the street that a life down the road was saved. But what I can tell you for certain is no one lost their life down the road as a result of what she did that night. This is, in my words, a hero. So, I want to thank you, Officer, for what you did. I'm glad that you're here. And thank you for your support in this. It truly means the world to all of us that live in this state. So, thank you. And with that, I'll present her with our challenge coin. Thank you very much. Nice one. There we go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer. I think public safety in our community is very important, and having the right people on the job. And thank you for your efforts and all that you do every single day, supporting our community and keeping us all safe.
Can we possibly get a photo with Officer Schumacher and the council, please?
Yeah. All right. Let's move ahead then to item number four, approval agenda. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Just one on the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Item 5A3 will be removed. You will see that in the future. And just as an FYI for the EDA agenda, I also have one small minor change, but we'll address that when the President of the EDA calls that meeting to order.
All right, so 5A3 is off?
Removed.
Removed. And Counselor Brennan?
Make a motion to approve the agenda of October 4th as modified.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda, or regular agenda, excuse me. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye. 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 Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Let's move ahead then to the consent to business. Are there any other changes outside of the ones noted?
No, sir.
Counselor Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent business as presented with the modification.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for what is now considered the modified consent agenda. There would be no further discussion. And before we vote then, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for October 4th of 2022. 5A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for September 20th of 2022. 5A2 adopts Resolution Number R 2022-TAC 128, appointing Jim Wheeler to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals and the Planning Commission. 5A3 has been removed. 5A4 sets a hearing date of October 18th, 2022, to review the action of Merwin Liquors in regards to their liquor and tobacco license for selling to underage persons. 5B1 adopts Resolution Number R 2022-TAC 129, setting a public hearing date for November 1st of 2022 for modification of the TIF spending plan. 5C1 adopts Resolution Number R 2022-TAC 127, accepting the 2022-TAC 120, or excuse me, 23 Towards Zero Deaths Traffic Enforcement Grant. 5D1 approves the 2022-TAC 23 Sidewalk and Trail Snow Removal Locations. 5D2 approves a drainage and utility encroachment agreement for a 2425-piece circle. 5D3 authorizes a cooperative maintenance agreement with Scott County to operate the traffic signal at county highways 15 and 16. And finally, 5D4 approves the Public Works Department Parks Division Maintenance Operator Assistant Position.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda. The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Item number six, now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record and welcome. Please come forward and speak into the mic. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Amy Blumquist. On behalf of the Shakopee VFW, we were looking into changing or having the liquor, Sunday liquor license moved to what the state recommends at 8:00 prior, you know, instead of the 10:00 that it is right now.
I'm Eric Breath. I'm Shakopee resident as well. I'll just here on behalf of the VFW. You know, I'm a volunteer there.
Okay. Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd ask, staff, is this something that is in council approval? Or is this something that can be handled at a staff level, please?
Thank you, Counselor Whiting. If it was, could be handled at a staff way of doing business, we would have done it over this weekend. We found out that there are multiple organizations that were looking to sell alcohol. Unfortunately, it is a city ordinance, so staff does not have the ability to do that. This ordinance has been in place for some time. It seems kind of out of touch with the times, frankly. And staff certainly wouldn't have a problem with drafting a change to that particular ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just one thing, you know, the VFW being big supporters of the community, from youth organizations to celebrations of life, to any kind of event that we can host there, you know, our Sunday and our weekend, you know, is a big part of that revenue, is to be able to give that back. So, to be able to compete with surrounding cities like Savage, you know, Prior Lake, other cities even within the county would at least help us be on par.
Well, very well. Any other comments? We're not, we're kind of limited on what we, how we can engage with the comments during this period, but I have that. It is top of the mind. I was going to bring it up during other business later in our meeting tonight for further discussion amongst our council.
Much appreciated.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
This is a period where the public can come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Good evening. Mark Larson. I've moved to Shakopee.
You have to speak right into the mic here.
I moved to Shakopee in 2020, built a house with D.R. Horton. And I just, first off, I'd like to make a statement that working with the people that work for Shakopee has been nothing but a joy and pleasure, the professionalism and competency that I've dealt with.
Thank you.
So, the reason why I'm here is just, I'm asking the council to consider fencing ordinances. So, especially, I live in an area of the D.R. Horton Development where it's like single slab homes. They aren't multi-story. And when someone builds a six-foot privacy fence, it can be kind of obstructive to your views out your window. And actually, I have some pictures.
Okay. You'll get some assistance on how to, you're going to probably put that right in the middle there. There may be a dot that comes up. Looks like it's a...
Frozen.
Yeah.
So, it's just, and I'm not asking for myself, just for the future. I'm just trying to point out that, you know, you buy a home, and then someone moves in next to you. And, you know, that's my view out my master bedroom window now. And, you know, the six-foot fence seems to be a little bit extreme. I got another neighbor that's on the other side. And he's got a, he's got a four-foot fence, which is, it's just the difference between the two fences is kind of dramatic. And just the fact that, you know, they build these fences. And I understand you're, they're trying to put as many houses as possible, but I mean, that six-foot fence is only five feet from my house. And if I had known that, if I had come and looked at that house today and saw that fence out my master bedroom window, I may not have bought the house. I probably would have kept on looking.
Right.
So, I'm just asking the council just to consider, especially with single-story homes, you may want to amend the ordinances of what's allowed, or how close to put it up to someone's, someone's house. Okay?
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yep. Welcome to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other resident like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, then, we would move ahead. Item seven, business remove consent. There was none. Moving ahead then to number eight, we would entertain a motion to recess to our EDA meeting. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to recess to our EDA meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to recess for EDA. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we stand in recess for the EDA. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I call to order the October 4th Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting. If staff can please note the roll. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of agenda. And I understand that there's some change.
Just a minor one, Madam President. Item 3B under consent, we actually have a wrong resolution number. The actual resolution number should be E 2022-TAC 009, not 010.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
I'll make the motion with what the change is made.
Thank you. There's been a motion. There's a second. Mr. Whiting?
I'll second that.
Thank you. There's been a motion and second to approve the agenda with that change in the ordinance or the resolution number. All those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes five to zero. Number three on the agenda is the consent business. On the consent business is the EDA minutes and the setting a public hearing date for the TIF spending plan with that changed resolution number. Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent business, noting the change in the resolution number.
There's been a motion and a second by Lehman.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. Item four on the agenda is the general business. And item 4A is a resolution approving the sale of certain properties for the amphitheater. And Mr. Kurski, are you presenting?
Madam Chair? Do we need to open a public hearing here?
Oh, thank you. This is a public hearing. Thank you.
I make a motion to open that public hearing.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion, the public hearing stands open. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President and board members. So, this is a public hearing for sale of land for the amphitheater. These are the two parcels that are owned by the EDA. The frontmost parcel is the former County Workforce Center. The rear parcel is a vacant piece of land that the EDA purchased separately from Scott County. So, land sale is Swervo Affiliat, who's the developer of the amphitheater. It's $2.9 million sale price. The EDA would get back $925,000. It would go back into the EDA fund that is for the vacant land parcel. When we purchased the workforce center, there was an interfund loan made between the city and the EDA for $3.3 million for the demo and acquisition. $2 million of the sale would go back to repay the interfund loan. There already is a $1 million TIF note that we have for the EDA. And then, the actual demolition was under the $300,000. We spent approximately $208,000, which is also in the current TIF note to the EDA.
Okay. Is there any questions for Mr. Kurski? No? Mr. Mars?
Well, I just wanted to want to make sure that we, back in January, approved the interfund loan. And here we are in early October, selling the land and paying back the interfund loan. And then, the other 1.2 million is secured, I believe, in the first position on the TIF aspect of that. Is that correct?
Madam President and board member, that's correct.
Mr. Lehman?
Thank you, Madam President. What's, what fund was the interfund loan from?
Madam President, I am not sure. I'll have to ask her City of Finance officer. I'm not sure which, where it came from.
I believe we took that out of the EDA, so it would be repaying the EDA. The other, the 1.2 million in additional funds, that would be paid for with the bond proceeds that we had issued too. So, it would be actually repaying, the bond proceeds would end up being repaid through, through future TIF revenues.
Are there any other questions? This is a public hearing. Would anybody in the public like to speak on this issue? Come forward and speak into the mic, if you would. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Been a motion to close it, and second by Contreras. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes five to, five to zero. Is there any other questions for Mr. Kurski tonight? Okay. Ms. Contreras?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution E 2022-010.
I'm going to, I'm going to have you correct that. It's, I think it's, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I was wrong.
E 2022-010, approving execution of a purchase agreement with Bloomington Investments LLC and its assigns.
There's been a motion. A second by Whiting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is item number 4B, which is a new lease for Haven in our, in their River Center City, or River City Center. Mr. Kurski?
Madam President, as you all are aware, we took over the master lease and all the subleases that were currently in place for Shakopee River Center from the former master leaseholder. As part of that, Haven Chemical Health System LLC had a lease that ran from March 1st, 2020 through February 28th, 2027. In the interim, the owner of Haven passed away, and they are in the process of selling the business. And so, per our regulations, you all would have to approve entering into a new lease with the party that's in the memo. Our recommendation would be to just continue the terms under the current Fourth Amendment to the original Haven lease, and then a mutually agreeable option down the road to enter into an additional five years if both parties agree. I think that would give us some time to see how the new operator is. We did review his financials, and everything looks fine. So, from a financial standpoint, I think the lease is secure.
Is there any questions for Mr. Kurski? Mr. Mars?
Madam President, so does the leases, a lease typically is guaranteed by the, usually the business owner, but is it specific to the use?
So, Madam President and board members, so the leases we inherited are pretty specific. So, they are not only specific to the use, they're specific to the tenant. And don't, any transfer is not allowed without approval. So, you would be approving the transfer of that lease to the new company that was mentioned.
No, I know, but it would be the same use. If there was a change in use, would that require a new lease?
Correct. And so, a new use, new tenant, whatever, we would then bring that back to and recommend either approving it or not approving it. The leases are pretty specific in that you just can't pass it on to someone else.
No, and I kind of get that, but I want to make sure it's the use. So, if the business is being sold and a new, new leaseholder, going to carry forward the same business, right?
Yep. So, Madam Chair and board members, it's the identical, they're basically buying the assets of Haven Chemical Health Systems in their book of business, and will be running them basically under that name, but as a different ownership, that business.
Mr. Lehman?
Madam President, questions for you. So, if an individual has a lease, and that individual's no longer with us, doesn't, if we do nothing, that lease just goes away, does it not?
Well, not necessarily, no, because it's in a LLC. So, that LLC, I'm guessing, I don't have access to that, but probably passes, those are members. And so, I'm assuming Mr. Haven was a member, and probably another member's family is the other member, and that is passing, those assets pass on to his estate. So, the business would still run. I think there is an interest on the part of the estate to actually sell this, because they, they don't want to run this business.
So, is the lease in the name of a person or in a business LLC?
It's in the name of the Haven Chemical Health Systems LLC.
Okay.
And so, what we would be doing is transferring that lease to the new owner that's in the memo.
And they've got a lease till '27 currently. They'd like to renew it for 10 years from now? Is that what they're, what they're seeking?
What staff is recommending, they have a lease right now that runs through February 28th, 2027, that we just leave that date in place. And then, in 2027, they can come back. And if the board at that time agrees, and they agree... And then, in twenty-twenty-seven, they can come back. And if the board at that time agrees and they agree, you could extend it. If not, we'd be done.
Right. But I'm, I read the first line in your memo and it says the tenant is requesting a lease transfer, a new lease and an extension for ten years.
Correct. And we're recommending we leave the current lease in place and that mute, both parties mutually agree to extend it at that time, six months before or whatever the twenty-twenty-seven date is.
Okay.
Cause we don't know what the building will be like or what the world will be like.
Five years, twenty-two to twenty-seven?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, then the term stays the same?
Yep, correct.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Can I get a motion to, uh, approve the lease transfer and extension for a total of ten years? Mr. Mars?
Madam President, I offer a motion to grant the creation of a new lease in the name of Crescendo Chemical Health LLC as doing business as the Haven for a period of five years. And that there be a clause that both parties must mutually agree to the extension beyond five years.
Okay. There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Contreras, seconds. Um, is there any other discussion, Mr. Lehman?
Madam Chair, is there anybody on the other side here that wants to speak to this?
Mr.?
Good evening. My name is Ted Herman. Uh, I am the anticipated owner of Crescendo Chemical Health. Uh, and appreciate you guys considering this tonight. As stated, we continue, we expect to, uh, continue the organization as is, providing the same services to the community in the same location with the same staff. So, in essence, it is an ownership transfer in its entirety.
Okay. Is there any questions for the applicant? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Um, all those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five to zero. I have a question, Mr. Kurski. Will we be seeing these leases, um, on a regular basis as we are managing the, uh, River City Center? Is this?
Madam President, that, that would be correct because these are actually contracts. Um, the board has to approve the contracts. We are, when it comes to maintenance and things like that, um, it's below the threshold that needs to come here, so we're getting things fixed as we need it. But when these contracts come forward or at least issues come up, we'll be bringing them back to you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, follow-up question on that? Is that, uh, so, uh, in the future, we're gonna see leases, but is it specific to the EDA alone? Approval, we, sometimes we have approvals in the EDA and then we see a mirror image as the council. And I want to know if there would be a, the same sort of thing or it's truly specific to the m, master lease tenant who we are now?
It's truly specific to the master lease tenant. So, the EDA, even though it's a city council, is a separate organization and separate charter and that's who all these, uh, agreements are with.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, item number four C, um, is a presentation on, of the TAP twenty-two. Mr. Kurski?
Uh, Madam President, Board Members, we thought we would just do a quick recap. Um, I believe originally we were at forty-seven thousand dollars. The Shakopee Public Utilities, out of the money they give us, had pledged towards this. Um, we're still doing the final accounting cause it was early in the month and some bills are still coming in, but they'll kick in about nineteen, nineteen thousand, five hundred dollars to, um, the event. The event did gross, um, back to the city after all the fees that came off of the tickets, uh, just over twenty-nine thousand dollars. Get this to work tonight. So, we had seven-hundred-and-twelve attendees. Um, this is a interesting map that Eventbrite, um, did provide to us. Two-hundred-and-thirty-two of those attendees came from Minneapolis, eighty-eight from Shakopee. You can see St. Paul was fifty-nine, Eden Prairie, forty-two, Savage, thirty, Prior Lake, twenty-two and on. Um, interestingly enough, there were six people that came from Chicago. There were a number of people from Philadelphia, West Virginia, California and Florida. So, we actually drew some interesting, um, people from out of state that came specifically for this event. So, um, we found with forty-four breweries, I think when we talked about this, I was hoping if we got ten or twenty, we would be hitting a home run. But, um, we did get forty-four, all Minnesota breweries from as far up as the Canadian border to a lot in the Twin Cities area. So, it was a pretty, um, interesting blend of people. Um, let's get this to work. This is a little video we have.
Welcome, everybody, to the first annual TAP twenty-two. Woohoo! Welcome. This is the TAP twenty-two Beer Festival. Good to see you. There's about forty-five vendors here in Minnesota. Check it out. Welcome.
So, you can see, uh, it was a decent crowd. Um, interesting thing we found was, cause it ended at four o'clock, a lot of the surrounding businesses. So, Turtles, Pablo's, um, Manah Brewing and Mallards and O'Briens all got slammed. So, these seven-hundred-and-twelve people, many who'd never been to Shakopee, it was interesting to hear people's comments about, they'd never been to downtown, they'd never been here. Um, they all went and ate. So, Manah had a line out in the street. Mallards was completely full, O'Briens was slammed. So, it was good to see that those people not only came for this event, but spent a significant amount of money afterwards, um, in Shakopee. And then on Friday night, um, some of you commented about the tent on the bridge. We did get a permit from Scott County to have the first event on, um, the old historic Home Street Bridge. Um, we had about sixty-five people there, including, um, our local congressperson. Um, a lot of the entrepreneurs, you can see in the picture here, the gentleman that's invented a machine that allows people that have no movement in their legs to be able to walk to get their organs working, attended. Um, he sat at the table with the president of St. Francis Hospital and they had a great discussion. And we look forward to them actually having their first unit potentially tested at St. Francis. We had other corporate representatives, including someone I hadn't met before, the new, um, Public Relations Director for Amazon came. Um, a lot of other local corporate, um, people, um, some members of the, uh, Shakopee Minute to Walk and Sue management came. Um, and then a lot of the brewers came, kind of surprising. And it was a great discussion to see a bunch of different entrepreneurs talking about their different trials and tribulations. Um, I think in general, it was a pretty well-received event all the way around, particularly for a first year with, knock on wood, there were no issues. And the weather was, even though it poured on Friday night, the weather, as you can see on Saturday, was great.
Thank you. Uh, is there any questions for Mr. Kurski regarding the event? Mr. Lehman?
So, if there's forty-one vendors?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Like, a couple, three more beers would really do me in after forty-one, right? Um, how does a person test so many different beers without getting inebriated?
So, it's really, uh, it was interesting, cause we, um, John Sullivan, our new Economic Development Coordinator, had lunch today with our marketing person that helped us on this and who actually attended the event, who lives in Shakopee. He said, uh, he's been to a lot of these and there's kind of, if you only have ten, you can probably go to all of them, but he said you really had to kind of plan your day. And this was a heavy female audience, which surprised a lot of people. Over sixty percent of the tickets sold were to women. So, they sold a lot more seltzers. That's a new thing that I personally don't drink. But, um, the first, second and third choice of the public were all seltzers that came from a brewery in Rochester. So, there's clearly a dynamic going on. It's also a much older crowd than the beer people, um, tend to see. Most of the bigger beer events in Minneapolis, it's twenty-two to thirty. This you can see is a somewhat older crowd. People had their children there in strollers. Um, so, people did not overimbibe and I think they really enjoyed, the comment that was made today, as you can see, it's really not that crowded. I've been to some of these events where the lines were twenty or thirty deep. Um, cause it is more of a, a drink fest versus a tasting festival. So, we had very small glasses that we provided. And they were able to talk to the brewers and find out, um, this was the first event ever in RAR's hundred-and-seventy-five-year history that they participated in. So, they re-resurrected, basically, the original Eagle Brewing Company and brewed a beer for this event that was stored somewhere for a hundred-and-seventy-five days in barrels and actually was served here. Um, and they'd never done that before. And all of their brewmasters were there and they were talking to other brewers and the people there. So, it was really a much, not a drinking event, but really a tasting and education event, which I thought was really interesting.
I quit drinking twenty years too early.
Yeah, I agree about the beer tasting. I mean, I was there and I actually saw people who would, you know, do the sniffing of the beer and, and the little sipping of the beer. And they were very into their, their beer tasting. And it was a very, uh, very, uh, you know, that's what they did.
Yeah. One of the things we learned, and I didn't know this, but most of these events, the distributors actually supply the people. So, when you go and you're talking to someone, it's someone that works for X-Y-Z Beer Distributor. Because this event was really aimed at the local, kind of smaller, um, people, almost all the people that came are, were the actual brewers. So, people were able to have conversations and say, well, how did you make this? And there were some pretty long, kind of, chemical discussions. And most of the breweries brought beers that they don't normally serve to anyone. They did them specifically for this event. So, it was a little unusual that they thought way out of the box. I know that, um, Dangerous Man from Minneapolis had some very, you know, a cucumber beer and a few other odd ones that I wouldn't go run to the store and buy. But people were drinking it, cause it was just something different to try.
Yeah, but I also saw that, witnessed that, um, uh, the, um, Shakopee Brew Hall had a wasabi beer. And it was very potent, but they did have other beer vendors there and talking to them about, how did you make this beer? And, you know, how, cause it was so unique, um, and different.
Supposed to get a lot of feedback, too, on their product.
Mr. Whiting?
Uh, Mr. Kurski, how many of these breweries are becoming to Shakopee?
How many of these?
How many are gonna relocate to Shakopee?
So, it really wasn't to get them to locate here. I mean, RAR is kind of historically been our kind of center. And one of the things we talked with RAR was, um, how can we engage them more? So, they have a brand-new person that came from, I think it was Miller Coors, who was their head brewer, that now runs their facility here. And one of the things they talked about is, if we were to do this next year, how do, how does RAR kind of on Friday night maybe do a workshop with their BSG group on new products coming out? And it really was about, I think, getting people who would not come to Shakopee normally to, to show up here and do, and do a different type of event.
So, what I'm hearing you saying is that the EDA spent nineteen thousand dollars for seven-hundred-and-forty people to get drunk.
No.
I don't see the opportu, opportunity here for growth with, uh, I mean, the, uh, we're, we have a budget next year, ninety-one thousand for the Entrepreneur Group, uh, to go have lunches, to go drinking, to have parties, to try and get something going. Um, I'm not seeing the value here. Uh, I, I just, I don't drink. I don't, uh, I think we're probably up to forty percent of this council that doesn't drink. I, where's the, where's the car shows? Where's, where's, uh, the nineteen thousand dollars we're gonna spend to try and get some of these other events here? To me, uh, this Entrepreneur Group is, is a party.
So, I would, um, Madam Chair and Board Members, so, I would say that's not true at all and kind of insulting to a group of people that have come together and have worked for the past year. One company which won the Scott County Award for being one of the most new innovative companies has actually moved from Prior Lake to Shakopee, moved all their business here, moved all their production here because of efforts like this, and they came to this event. There's another, the gentleman in wheelchairs, a Shakopee company, and we've been working with him. Our consultant has worked for about a year with him on his business plan. And that company is about to release pretty much a world-changing product for people that are in wheelchairs.
Right. And these are members of the Entrepreneur Group currently. So, we threw them a party.
No, the idea was to get breweries that are entrepreneur people to, with other entrepreneurs and with other corporations, to get people. I mean, these are the kind of events where the people who never come to Shakopee come and went, I heard about a hundred times. This is an amazing downtown. When did this happen? And where did these restaurants come from? And where have I been all my life? Cause I didn't know anything about Shakopee.
And I think the Chamber does a good job of, uh, I have a floor still, Madam Chair. I think Shakopee Chamber does a good job with rhythm on the rails and things like that to support, uh, the downtown. Uh, the Entrepreneur Group was, uh, in my mind, focused on to develop, uh, the Innovation Center and create opportunities for that. I don't see how this fits.
Uh, Mr. Mars?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I, you know, I think this is all about innovation. It's the first year. Um, at the dinner the night before, it's here, the, from those entrepreneurs. And yes, one company is already here. Another company has a, is a product already on the market and they're bursting at the seams at their other locations. And they're looking, uh, here in Shakopee for locations. Uh, this is a breeding ground. And, you know, I saw passion from the entrepreneurs. I also saw on Saturday, a lot of love for Shakopee. Seven-hundred people, eighty-eight were from Shakopee. Um, we're bringing people here. We're trying to showcase our community. Entrepreneurs, all those brewers started in their own garage. We have three of them in our community. Um, and on top of the Entrepreneur Group with, that sell other widgets, right, that are real important. Um, people from all over, uh, great partnership with the Public Utility. Um, it had I Love Shakopee all over it. This is what it's about. And if we're gonna innovate as a city and, and think differently, this is exactly the type of, uh, event that we should be doing in combination, right? Cause it's a entrepreneur-type dinner along with the entrepreneurs in a, in an industry like, uh, like, uh, the microbreweries that is coming. Um, I talked to a lot of people, um, and Mr. Kurski's correct. I talked to a lot of people. You're from Shakopee? No, I'm from X-Y-Z. Boy, I didn't know you had a downtown and that's pretty cool. Also did talk to, as Michael Kurski said, two of our business owners, um, downtown that had their single busiest day of the year, um, after four o'clock on this event. So, I think, uh, and people I talked to, one, are you doing this again next year? I think it's pretty cool.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, what, what this event really did was plant seeds. Um, I was at the table on, on Friday night with, uh, the president of St. Francis and with the innovator that, uh, Michael had described earlier. And they would have never got together if it wasn't for that event. And I was there listening to their conversations and seeing the sparks fly between them and recognizing that, hey, we're a healthcare organization and we have an innovative company here that has the ability to do something we should probably be talking together. And, you know, the idea of characterizing this as throwing a, a party is frankly offensive because what it's doing is planting the seeds for future success. Anytime you talk about innovation, it's not a light switch. We're not throwing a light switch and something, boom, suddenly we've got twenty companies showing up. Uh, and as Michael will tell you in his prior experience in Greenville, South Carolina, uh, it takes time for these things to develop. And what we have done here is start that process. Uh, will there be anything tangible that comes out of this one event? I don't know. But I can tell you, I heard the conversations that certainly could lead to that. And, uh, if we're, if we're gonna characterize this as just a, a party, well, that's unfortunate because it wasn't that at all. It was literally bringing innovators, both from the brewery community and innovators from, you know, uh, from multi-million dollar companies that these individuals have built and getting them under a tent in the middle of the rain and talking about, uh, the concepts that they, uh, they deal with on a daily basis as innovators. And then making connections, not only with the city, but more importantly, between each other. And that is a value added that frankly is, is way beyond simply, uh, uh, an event. It is something that seeds were planted and we'll see where it goes. But if you're expecting that we're gonna throw a light switch and magical things are happening, and we'll see where it goes, but if you're expecting that we're gonna throw a light switch and magical things are happening, then you don't understand innovation.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. You know, I, I, the night, um, of the, before the, of the dinner, I sat with a woman entrepreneur who was developing, um, uh, medical technology. And she had the opportunity to talk to the, the people that were at the table with us. Um, and she was very grateful. Um, and I think that she's gonna be a person that is gonna be wanting to stay here in our community. Um, she had worked for Seag- Seagate and now she's going off on her own for medical technology. Um, she was very excited about what that evening brought to her and her, her business. And, um, you know, we have a tagline in, in Chakrapie and a, of being thriving, innovative and, and fun. And really, this was a culmination of all, all of those things. We're, we're a great community and we're doing things that are, are different than anybody else in our, uh, there in the surrounding areas. Um, so I think it's, um, it was a great opportunity. And, um, we're doing things different and I appreciate the work that was put in, in to get it done. Mr. Whiting?
Mr. Kurski, Mr. Reynolds, what I find offensive is that we took a loss of nineteen thousand dollars for a beer fest. And that's the taxpayers or you could say the rate payer is money. If we're gonna do something like this, we should be working at a profit. I understand that these don't always happen in the first year, uh, being involved with some of these events. I don't see it as a good use of our taxpayers' money.
Mr. Reynolds?
Council, uh, Whiting, there are a few things that the City of Chakrapie does that makes a profit. We don't deal in profit. We do things differently. We talk about public value. And this is simply public value. It was an excellent thing. Uh, I wish you would have been there Friday night to hear the conversations that were a part of that. But we don't do profit as a city. We create public value and this event is full of public value.
Ms. Contreras?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say I don't drink. And that in any way, from the beginning, I supported this and I said, I'm still a small, a, a small business owner supporter. And like Mr. Reynolds said, we're planting seeds. We, we're building partnerships. We're trying to figure out, because that's what we are, an innovative city. And yeah, it, it, I, I wasn't part of the second event. I was part of the first one and listening to those conversations, I was like, wow. And there was a vision, um, I'm trying to think for, like, I don't know how many years, like six years ago of having that, having, using that bridge in this same event, you know, for, for different people to, to, to have a, a meal under a tent. And it was so amazing to see that that vision finally, you know, it happened. It happened. So, that to me meant a lot. And to see all these, I mean, who knows where this is gonna take you? This gentleman in the wheelchair in Saint Francis? Yes, it's like, it, it, it's, it's innovation. It's stuff that's gonna happen and, and patience. Patience, it's a virtue. So, we'll see it one day and then we'll be like, I'm happy I was able to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman?
How much were the tickets for an individual to get in?
Uh, fifty dollars for VIP and forty dollars for the general public.
In my prime, I would have drank more than forty dollars worth.
I, I mean, I will say, having done this in the past, Madam Chair and Board Members in other cities, I think, in Greenville, I think the first year we spent a hundred thousand dollars. And it was a moderate success. Actually, I would say this was more successful. Um, the second year, a company came and invested thirty-five million dollars in a local company. It takes time. The third year, it got better and right now they get a hundred companies that now are participating because the event that we did in Greenville has become known in the whole East Coast and people come from all the surrounding states. I think the fact that for a first-year event, um, as Mr. Reynolds said, I, I talked at length with the Chakrapie Public Utilities, they got a huge benefit out of this on Friday night because they've been working in a very specific project and got to sit with people they wished they were able to meet earlier and had never met before and had a great conversation and could lead to probably one of the largest projects in this region. Just by happenstance, he said, I really wish I could meet this person. I said, they're sitting right on that table. Let me go introduce you to them. So, I think that while we're a growing community, believe it or not, a lot of people don't meet people on a regular basis. I mean, that's the first time I've ever met the gentleman from Amazon because, you know, they've churned through those people a significant amount and he's very interested in what we're doing. You know, Amazon as a company has invested tons of money in innovation and he couldn't believe we put this group together. He was in shock that this was happening in Chakrapie. He said, if this had been Minneapolis, he said, I would have gone, yeah, whatever. But he said, to see it happening in Chakrapie, he was amazed. And as the mayor said, we've been working with one company that, um, it probably won't happen this year, but probably next year, um, we're gonna get them to move here and it'll probably be eighty to a hundred jobs that's in this group.
Thank you. Mr. Mars?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of, uh, of, uh, pursuing plans for TAP twenty-three. I thought the dinner was great. I'd like, at the event though, I'd like to have, it'd be great if we could integrate the entrepreneurs and then they can showcase their products of depending. And then you got, you can have a beer and visit and then you can see a product, whether it's a early-stage prototype or some of these are, uh, the, some of the entrepreneurs actually, you know, are having sales and stuff. Um, but it'd be great to see their product. One of those, uh, products was, uh, the bike company that gave away, uh, donated, uh, it was an eight thousand dollar, uh, graphite mountain bike that, you know, I used to bike in my youth and, uh, uh, you know, with the banana seat and that, and that was quite the thing. Uh, these new bikes today, holy Hannah. Um, but I, I just think it's, it ties together very well. We've been working on our innovation center for a while. Uh, we're not giving up. Um, and that, you know, that's all ties together. Um, so I think it's important to the community. I think it's, in the long run, if we were, sit here today and debate over some expenses, some money, and in ten years from now, I bet we'd look back and that'd be a day in the park.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurski.
Thank you.
Um, item number five is the reports and five A is the EDA bill list. Does anybody have any questions regarding the bill list? Okay. Item number six is adjourned.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, November first.
There's been a motion and a second by Contreras. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion passes five to zero. Um, we'll go back to the regular meeting.
Uh, we will reconvene the City of Chakrapie City Council meeting for November fourth, two thousand twenty-two. We just completed our EDA meeting. And next up, we are moving forward to ten A one, which is our five-year capital improvement plan and Nate will present.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Um, so, uh, tonight we are asking for approval of the capital improvement plan. Uh, I'll go through the presentation that summarizes the plan, but, uh, Mr. Kurski and Mr. Lilahogar are also here to answer, uh, questions that you may have. Uh, the capital improvement plan, or CIP, is a non-binding document of future intent of city capital projects over the next five years. Uh, included as an appendix is also the city's, uh, fifteen-year capital improvement plan, uh, long-term financial plan and equipment replacement schedule. Uh, the process and document itself allows the city to plan for larger and more complex projects. Uh, by design, the CIP is fluid because priorities can change drastically from year to year. Uh, ultimately, twenty twenty-three projects, uh, will be incorporated within the twenty-three, um, twenty twenty-three budget and approved with the adoption of that budget. Uh, we've developed our capital projects, uh, based on, uh, estimated year need and anticipated, uh, funding opportunities. Uh, they are a prioritized list. Uh, full priority definitions are included in the document, but I'd simply, uh, think of those three priorities as have-to-do, smart-to-do and want-to-do. Uh, here's the CIP schedule. Uh, again, we're asking for, uh, approval of the CIP tonight. And then again, the twenty twenty-three projects will be incorporated with the annual budget, uh, which will be approved in December. Uh, here's the total CIP expenditures by fund. Um, over the five-year CIP, we've identified a hundred and seventeen million in projects, uh, including thirty-two million for twenty twenty-three, uh, with larger projects included in the buildings, capital improvements, um, park development and sanitary sewer funds. Um, and then this slide shows the funding source. Um, just wanted to emphasize that there's, uh, many different funding sources for these projects. It's not necessarily, um, property tax. Uh, certainly isn't the primary funding source. Uh, those funding sources would include park dedication fees, uh, local, state and federal grants, uh, cost sharing with local partners, franchise fees, special assessments, uh, internal rent charges with various departments, uh, utility charges for sanders, sewer and storm drainage. Then, did not wanna go, uh, into as much detail as I did at the CIP work session. Uh, so I don't plan on going through each individual project, uh, but wanted to update you on any changes we had since that, um, July work session. Uh, I did provide a document within the, the packet that, um, outlines each of these changes and it references a, a page number as well, uh, for each of those projects. Uh, this would include an update in the cost estimate for the traffic signal at county, state and highway one oh one in Shenandoah. And then added projects for, uh, fire station number two, AC splits, uh, Odo- Odoad parking lot, paving and park rehab, uh, and a police speed trailer and license plate reader. Uh, we've also now included the fifteen-year CIP, uh, as mentioned in the appendix section, as well as the long-term financial plan, which we presented to you guys earlier this year. And then lastly, there were, um, a number of minor description changes in, in pictures that we updated throughout the, the book. So, upcoming steps, tonight we're asking for a motion to approve the CIP. Uh, if approved by city council, uh, we will get the final CIP on our website. Uh, so the full plan will be available to, uh, members of the public or anybody who wants more information on the projects. Uh, each specific project does have an identified specific contact person. Uh, we do this intentionally so you know who is responsible for that project. Uh, the twenty twenty-three CIP projects will be included, uh, again with the, with the budget. Uh, and as a reminder that going forward, any project over twenty-five thousand, um, would be brought in front of city council for, uh, further discussion and, and consideration for approval. So, city council will have a chance to, um, review any, all those individual projects when the timing comes. Uh, so with that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
On the CIP, um, Counselor Lehman?
Did anybody get a ten A one memo? I, I didn't receive one.
It wasn't a memo, it was the book.
Oh, it's just a book?
Um, there should have been a memo included and then there should have been a one-page that showed all the, all the changes within there. Um, I know they were in, in Nova's agenda whether or not they made it through the printed copy.
The slideshow was also a part of it? None of you got it?
This is the second or third time we've seen the CIP and discussed it at length. Um, do you have specific questions?
Well, he, he was referring to the memo and I, um, I don't have the memo, so, um, I did read through the whole book. Same concerns that I always have. Shows in twenty-four that, uh, capital improvement fund is what, ten million dollars negative and park fund is three million dollars negative and...
Just one, one quick comment. I, I, we do have enough, um, we obviously went through the cash flows at our last work session when we talked about this. We certainly have enough funding to make it through our twenty twenty-three projects and then as we move forward, we'll have to adjust accordingly whether or not, um, funding is there or whether or not we proceed with some of those projects.
And just as a reminder for everyone, the, the CIP is a plan and essentially it's only the twenty twenty-three projects that actually would be brought forward. And every year, uh, plans shift and projects either come forward or they move back depending on funding streams. Uh, the best example I can give is, is, uh, our, our riverbank stabilization. Obviously, if we get fully funded for that, that'll come forward. Uh, until that happens, we continue to push it back year after year, but ultimately, you know, our goal is to obviously do that project.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I have a second question. When, when I looked at the, uh, parks and capital improvement funds, are them numbers reflective of outside revenue or, or not? As projected in your document?
Okay, well, there's, there's two different, each of the department or each of the funds will have a couple of different pages. One will be the project listed as we have them put into our planet software and then I'll have, um, basically a cash flow projection that will incorporate, um, those funding sources that aren't necessarily specific to those projects, but fall into those funds. Um, for example, the seven hundred thousand dollar levy for the capital improvement fund. That's not specific for any project, but it has been incorporated within those, within that financial statement cash flow.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking, Mayor, is in various projects, you show multiple sources of revenue, whether it's city's portion, the county's portion, the state's portion, the federal government's portion for a project. You've estimated what their portion of that revenue might be?
Correct.
Are them revenues included in your projections of negative fund balances?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Well, I have a comment that you've been doing this for a long time, Counselor Lehman. Uh, let's say, just take an example of a project in two thousand twenty-four that you're saying that in a capital improvements or a park that creates a deficit, let's say it's a million-dollar project. And let's say that we have an earmark for five hundred thousand in grant or some funding source outside a city. If that doesn't come forward, we're gonna push that out, right? We've already, uh, Mr. Reynolds brought up the innovation center, prime example of that. So, why a snapshot in time on something that's not approved pending some grant money, um, might show a deficit, but then if the grant money doesn't come, do you, you push it out, uh, for a further date? Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, that, that's correct, Mr. Mayor and Members of Council. You know, essentially, we're, we're stacking projects and if, you know, they're, they're, they're planned out, but nothing happens unless we have secured the funding. So, we might have ten projects in twenty twenty-four, five of which may actually be funded. And either we make a decision that those fall off the list or it gets pushed back. Uh, there, the idea of a deficit, the deficit doesn't ever occur other than for planning purposes. There is no deficit for building purposes. Essentially, if the money isn't there, the project doesn't move forward.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and part of these deficits, if you call them that, in our plan, we've talked about, this is not the first time that, that this, uh, document has come before us and I think we've had discussion about potential bonding or, you know, other opportunities and, and some of these other discussions that we just had. So, it's nothing new, um, that those holes are there.
Yeah.
Cult- Culture Brennan?
In each project that is, um, presented in the book, it will show the prior years. Um, CIP that's been carried forward and hasn't been, uh, used up. So, that's, that goes on also. So, I have, I have one question.
Yeah?
Has this been presented to the other, um, organizations like Spock and, and, um, the county to make sure that they're in line with us?
Uh, not at a presentation level, but we've certainly provided a draft to Chakrapie Public Utilities and we planned on providing a, a final copy. I'm not sure if the county has requested. I'm certain they're only concerned about specific projects.
Um, do you? Uh, Mayor and Council Members, we do coordinate the specific projects, um, that do pertain to the county, um, with their CIP as well. So, they have been coordinated together. And, and, uh, Mayor and Council Members, if I could make another comment specific to the CIF fund, um, there's two, I'll call them outlier projects where, um, their plan for the construction of twenty twenty-four and or beyond. Two examples, one is the ADA, street lighting tree replacement for downtown and the other would be the Mary's Town Road project. It's important to have those in our CIP. And we're seeking additional funding from what we even expect. For example, like the Mary's Town Road project, it's a six million dollar project. Um, we do have cost sharing with MinDOT and federal cost sharing, about four point four million, but we're hoping even to get even more than that. So, um, it's in flux. Um, we, they're, they need to be in the CIP so we can actually pursue that funding. Um, if it's not in our CIP, we might as well not even pursue that funding. So, um, the downtown project, uh, we are trying to put a better project together. We know we have to come back to the council with a better solidified funding scenario for that. Um, beyond that, they're mostly pavement, um, maintenance projects, um, where we use a combination of different funding, um, and notably from our MSA state aid fund. Um, that also, um, puts money into the CIF fund. So, I thought I'd give that a little background additional there.
Appreciate that. Other questions on the CIP? Other questions on the CIP? Uh, just to remind everybody that, uh, we adopt the CIP and at a later date, we'll have a discussion to try to include it in the budget, but then all projects over twenty-five grand would need to come back to this council on an individual basis for approval. need to come back to this council on an individual basis for approval. We're tonight, just the decision is to adopt the five-year CIP, and really, that's in essence, the two thousand twenty-three CIP. Counselor Whiting?
Well, with that, I'll see if I can pull off an adequate motion, but I'll make a motion to approve the capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven and move its adoption.
A second.
I have a motion and a second for their discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? That motion passes, thank you all very much. Let's move ahead then, ten B. One, Canterbury Park Horse Barn Redevelopment PUD. Mike, welcome back.
I feel like I should have a chair up here tonight. Mayor and council, this is the Canterbury Park Horse Barns Redevelopment PUD. So Canterbury Park has made application for a planned unit development to allow for redevelopment of the horse barn area, nine barns will be demolished this fall for construction of infrastructure for the amphitheater, additional barns will need to be demolished later as the southeast development south of the amphitheater occurs. Canterbury was specifically allowed a mix of uses for this complex, specifically noting that horse racing, bedding, stabilizing horses, housing for four hundred and eighty track-related people, card club and special events such as trade shows, car shows, and other outdoor events were approved uses. As part of this request, Canterbury is requesting approval to allow for the development of the following structures, proposed barns, which would be a fabric construction, and four supporting facility buildings, remodel of existing barns and dorms, construction of new dorms, architectural and structural engineering of a stable gate and a quarantine barn, and reconfiguration of the practice track. The project consists of the redevelopment of existing winter and summer horse barns and construction of a new proposed fabric structures and supporting facilities throughout. The project also includes the future construction of a new single-story dorm facilities and the remodel of existing facilities to accommodate future roadways. So here is the site plan, it's kind of in phases, so this area over here, area thirteen is the area that will be demolished, the amphitheater is in area ten, we need this area cleared because that will be parking and additional access. So the plan right now is, once the amphitheater developer closes with Canterbury and with the EDA, Canterbury will then begin the demolition of this area. You can see in this rendering, the traffic, the practice track has been shrunken down, they will be doing some, potentially some temporary stables, and then one barn. This is fairly complicated because it can only work when the track is not in operation, so, because it, of course, disturbs the horses, so their goal is this year to demolish these barns, get the footings and foundation in for this new barn, and the footing and foundation in for the area over here, nine, for the new dormitory spaces. And then this is the kind of ultimate build-out, while the rendering you'll see shows six, the belief right now is probably eventually have four permanent barns. There are some changes, as you all are aware, going on in the horse arena, and they're not sure long-term what the actual horse count will be here, so they're trying to be careful as they build new barns that we don't end up overbuilding this area and not have horses. You can see over time, you'll have the amphitheater up here, future development in six, this is a parking lot needed for the amphitheater with additional development, and then a much larger development that will be at the corner of Twelfth Avenue and Canterbury. So this is the ultimate kind of build-out. Here's a rendering, so again, there'll only be likely four of these, but these are fabric barns, open air. Here's a better picture, give you a scale, they're about forty-five feet tall. It was asked at the planning commission, why fabric? These are actually much better for the health of the animals, this fabric does allow sunlight to come in, actually during the day, it's rare that they actually have to have lights on in the barns. There's also much better air circulation for the horses, and in general, the horses are a lot happier in this kind of environment. It is a steel structure, so this is, you can see here, the steel goes all the way up, they can carry the snow load, and then again, they will be sprinkled on the inside, but this fabric is as best you can, is fireproof, so it does catch on fire, it puts itself out. Here's kind of the layout, so here are the stalls, these are the structural steel elements going up, so these are the new horse stalls, and then some supporting facilities on the outside and on the inside, and then some walking areas for the horses over here, and then restrooms and other support facilities over here for the barns. This is the, we're working right now with the architect, this is the proposal for the new dormitories. We met with them last week, this'll end up being a finished metal panel, and then this will probably be hardy, board and batten. Again, this comes pretty close, we've talked to them how the detailing will be at the ground, but these are basically single-room occupancy for a lot of the people right now that are living on top of the barns. And this is a kind of bigger rendering of what this will look like, so this is right next to the track, so they have outdoor eating area and gathering areas, they also have ventilation for each of these units. So I would say this is a pretty big step up from the, some of the current barn situation that we currently have. So staff's recommend Shakopee City Council move the adoption ordinance oh twenty-two oh twenty-four to rezone properties from major recreation to planned unit development district number nine, Canterbury Barns.
Excellent. Questions of staff, Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Kirske, you mentioned the six, if you want to go back to that six barns look, I know that you said that this is probably not going to be the the plan, but if they wanted to go to six, if you go to your slide with the four barns, do they have space to add those other two if they wanted to expand with this plan?
Mayor and council, no, and again, this was labeled concept view aerial, because whoever did this, I don't think had been to Canterbury. But I'll leave it to Canterbury to kind of answer what the long-term plans are, but they have some room, if I can get this cursor to work, in this area, should the number of horses shrink over time, they have potentially could add additional new barns in this area should they choose at some point to tear any other barns down. So they have room as they need if they decide to change over some of these barns.
One more question, the dormitories are flat-roofed?
They have a bit of a pitch to them, I believe they have, one of the reasons why they want to get going is they have a membrane roof, and they need to order that because that is one of the supply chain shortages right now is membrane roofing. So it'll have some pitch to drain.
Thank you.
Other questions of staff, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The picture of the six fabric buildings, the first thing I saw when I looked at this was an opportunity to put something unique on the roof of them buildings, whether it's art of horses or something. It just seems to, it's just so overpowering the way it is, and I thought it would, I don't know how the manufacturing process is, I know they've got different colors on the bottom around the edges and stuff, but, and I don't, I know you can't advertise on it because it wouldn't be in lockstep with our sign ordinance, but, boy, I was thinking a couple of big horse pictures or something on them roofs would go a long way.
You got some expensive apartments looking at that door.
Well, just just sharing what my first thought was when I looked at it.
And again, these.
Seems to be a wall of white.
Yep, they, that's an aerial shot that only you'll see from a drone or a helicopter, this is really more you'll see, you'll see these from the grandstand, but it's kind of the end and some parts of the roof. But the applicants here, and they can talk about, they had a pretty lengthy discussion at the planning commission.
Counselor Brennan?
In phase two, you, there's a twenty-two RV campsite, is that for the public or is that for staff, or how would that be used?
Council, those are RV sites for people that come here to work during the summer months, work on horses, so there's different layers here, there's people that actually work on the horses, there's people that own the horses, there are trainers, some of the trainers will have RVs and trailers.
That's been there for a while.
Counselor Brennan?
I have another question, has the fire department taken a look at this and looked at ask access and?
Mayor and council, one of the conditions, if you go back to the site plan, is they originally showed a access off of Twelfth Avenue, we're asking they figure out a better access off this new street over here or down here over time, that this still needs to be resolved, as does the screening. We've spoken to Canterbury about different fence types and landscaping to kind of buffer the other road there.
So, one more question, would that potentially be the same access for the amphitheater area?
Mayor and council, it's a completely different time, so when they bring in the horses, it's typically in the morning, they would bring them probably through a gate down here, but their main entrance is actually up here that's gated and controlled, they have a lot of rules with the racing commission, this is more if something were to happen, that they can get a horse in or out down here in an emergency, or if there were a fire, the fire department would have access to a gate here to get right into here.
Okay.
Other questions? I guess I have a couple. First of all, if you can go back to phase two plan, site plan, so phase two, well, it kind of connects with this, because I'm counting eight barns there in section thirteen, those would come down.
So there's actually, I believe, nine barns that get impacted, yep.
Um, in phase one, they come down, but it's critical for the amphitheater, I think, to, you show it as phase two, so my, I'm gonna ask a timing question, because doesn't the amphitheater need that section thirteen for parking? Isn't that gonna be where our drop-off is for transit aspect?
Mayor and council, that'd actually be a public parking lot, so it'll be used for both the amphitheater and the other uses that get developed here. So this, the applicants here, but the plan is these will come down before wintertime, and they'll get this foundation and footing is probably poured so that come the spring, they can put this barn up right away, because it'll replace basically these barns. And when they start work on the amphitheater, this will be open in twenty twenty-four, that'll give them time to work in this area, they'll probably, you know, do grading and utility work here.
All right. My next question is for the new barns, this is a PUD, so it's kind of, always has been advertised as a, when we see a plan and we approve it, that's what we get, right?
Mayor and council, that's correct, so.
So if we went back to the pictures on the barn, the new barns, are we gonna get the color wrapping around the around the edging? And I know Counselor Lehman brought up just the big bold whiteness of the thing, but I, when I first looked at it, I went, that's a lot of white, but I do like the touch of color to break up your visual aspect of it, and not that we're gonna be flying over it, right?
So Mayor and council, the goal is to get some color, one of the issues I know the building department's had is this fabric needs to be fireproof, and so there aren't a whole lot of color choices in the fireproofing world. White's important because it does a lot, bring a lot of light in for the horses, but that banning will be red or some other color that we can get as close to that that's fireproof.
Right, and there's a heat factor too as well, and white reflects, so I understand that. Okay, other questions? Comments?
And the applicant is here to answer a question.
Does the applicant want to come forward and just make general comment on the item before us? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, Randy Sampson, I'm the CEO of Canterbury Park. I really don't have a presentation, you know, I think Mr. Kirske covered it, I'd be happy to address questions or follow up on some of the questions already asked, I will only comment that this, you know, this is obviously, you know, us working towards fulfilling one of the major commitments that was related to our tax increment financing was the redevelopment of our barn area and, and, you know, redeveloping that area to allow for, you know, future development, that's a higher and better use for that prime property, and to do that required consolidating our backside and, you know, shrinking the footprint of it, and we have been able to do that by, number one, by having larger barns that, you know, can house more horses and and in an ability, you know, in a in a effort to, you know, better utilize the land that's available. I will also add that, you know, and Mr. Kirske covered it, but the, both the barns and the dorms, we believe are are great improvements from our current facilities and will be very, you know, in terms of accommodating the people and the and the horses that are staying on our backside over the summer, these are, you know, we believe significant improvements. Mr. Kirske mentioned the the fabric barn, and technically, you know, if you, I think you're probably all familiar, there's a, right across the road where the salt is stored or whatever, you know, Mr. Lilahog has a building over there, that's what we're talking about, it's not cloth in terms of fabric, it's it's more of a vinyl type, you know, material, but it is commonly used in in a variety of, you know, agricultural and other uses, it is commonly now in other other states where they're building new barns, which there aren't very many tracks that are building barns these days, but the ones that are, are using this model, and and as Mr. Kirske mentioned, the the, you know, it's natural light is what this, one of the main benefits of this, as well as the high ceilings, you can see the venting on the ends and on the top, which does create this chimney effect to, when it's, when there's heat in there to to pull in fresh air and gets in, you know, much better ventilation for the horses, which is a huge improvement. And as far as the dorms, you know, the these these dorms that were be, you know, as as Mr. Kirske mentioned, they're, they do have doors to the outside, they will, they will have like their own little porch to sit outside, they will have, you know, these grassy areas where there could be picnic tables and a barbecue and social areas, and so we really do believe that this is a, you know, a really nice improvement and and gonna be, you know, an attraction to help us recruit horses. Also, you know, you've you've, you can see, if you do the math, we're taking out nine barns and we're putting in, you know, only one initially in the first phase, along with potentially the temporary stalls, although right now, we don't believe that those are needed, you know, and the reason for that is we currently have sixteen hundred stalls, but this year, we only had thirteen hundred or so horses, and the, you know, throughout the country, the population of horses on the backside is is shrinking, and so we believe, you know, as in the future, we will need less stalls, and so that that is, you know, as Mr. Kirske mentioned, we're we're looking to phase this in partly to be able to better gauge where we're gonna really be in the next few years in terms of number of horses that we need to accommodate, and also, we do have a limited construction period, you know, to not have too much disruption going on during racing, you know, we we have to phase this in over several years, you can't just come in and blow it all up and get it done in one year, so those are, you know, just a few comments, but happy to address any any specific questions from the council.
Questions, if you'd have a, Counselor Lehman?
The sea of white in the roofs, is that really the only option they have?
Council member, Councilman Lehman and Mr. Mayor, you know, as Mr. Kirske did, you know, he he's right in terms of the white, the main advantage of white is it does let in more light, we actually have a building, you know, Greystone does these buildings, Mr. O'Brien is here, if there's specific questions about the construction, they're very familiar, done a lot of these buildings, and and they've worked out very well for them, but we actually have one in our, this is a sidebar, but in in our, connecting our grandstand to our expo center that we use, and and we, in that one, we decided to go with kind of a yellowish color that matches the building. The problem with that is when you have craft shows and other events in there, everything in there is yellow, because you're getting the, you know, obviously, the color that's coming from the roof, so the white is, you know, is going to provide more light and more nat, you know, more natural feel, which really does, again, the horses have the feeling like they're outside and when the sun's shining and and you have the the light coming in. We also, Councilman Lehman, we may be back to talk about the sign ordinance you referred to, because there is a certainly advertising opportunity, I can tell you that in, at Churchill Downs, that barns are turned the other direction, but that whole side, you know, has Dodge Ram trucks and, you know, Budweiser beer on the roof of those barns, because it is great signage that you can see from the grandstand, you know, so there there is a potential at some point to to look at.
Does that take away from the light transmitting inside the building?
I'm guessing it probably has some impact on that, yeah. We we, the way this is set up, the the ends would be facing the grandstand and and could be. could be a good location for some signage that would not impact the light coming through if they're on the, on the ends that are facing the grandstand.
Others? Councilor Brennan?
I, I recall the pictures that we saw when we were doing the TIF of the dormitories and the barns, and this will be, definitely be a great improvement of, over those, something.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, I think some of those barns are actually the original ones, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, all of them are original. And, you know, they, they are in need of renovation, as, as has been mentioned, we're building new barns, but we also now, you know, we've been hel-, holding off on some of the deferred maintenance on the barns until we really nail down which ones were staying and which ones were going to be replaced. And, and there will be a need to get in and, and renovate those over the next few years also.
Well, it's very exciting and, you know, I, I think you're right, those, those barns are the originals from forty years old and to get a, a new, and if they're bigger, more efficient, more effective for your organization and can, I mean, obviously the build-out of this development is critical to our community and the amphitheater and then the extra parking. So I think those are my comments. And we do, you're right, we do have a local construction company that's almost an expert on these fabric buildings. They do a great job.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Other, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Councillors? Councilor Brennan?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number O-2022-024, approving the Canterbury Park Horse Barns redevelopment PUD.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion? Another big step here for the overall plan of the redevelopment of Canterbury and, uh, Councilor Bren-, or Councilor Lehman?
The, the, this portion of the improvements are being funded by Canterbury? He nodded yes.
I saw that. I have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move ahead then to item 10B2, the Quarry Park Playground Equipment Purchase Agreement. And who's presenting this? Oh, Michael! Gosh, long time no see.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So this is the Quarry Park Playground. So master plan calls for a unique playground, a destination for residents across the city. It's currently in the CIP for 2023. The PRAB reviewed two concepts and provided feedback that resulted in our final concept that you'll see in a second. We get the best price ordering now. There's going to be some significant price increases. Just like everything, playground equipment has gone through the roof in cost. A contract for the actual site work will come later. So this is the playground from Berliner. It's pretty unusual, so we've got this piece here. There's some swing items here. There's some accessible swings over here. This was the preferred and favored concept by the PRAB. It'll be a very unusual playground, not, not like anything else in the city. That's been kind of one of our goals is to try and do things that have not been purchased anywhere around us to make something unique. One of the things we've learned is, I didn't know this, but some of our employees have children and they literally make a weekend of going to different cities, to different playgrounds. And they have mentioned that our playgrounds have not been very interesting and they're all pretty excited that we're now going to be one of the leaders in kind of new playgrounds. So we would ask to accept the quote and award a contract in the amount of $146,158.75 from Saint Quarry Recreation Fund Playgrounds, Inc., for the Quarry Lake Park Playground Equipment Purchase. And again, this is the equipment only and we'll be back with a contract. Again, this, the costs are going up and they have agreed to hold this price for us.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Councilor Whitey?
I know it was a concept at the time and this is just the playground portion of it, but I think we had talked about some hammock areas and different things in that park. Is that going to be looked at separately from the playground equipment?
Mayor and council, that's correct. So in fact, let's see if I can, Mr. Lilahog will correct me, but we are probably within the month going to be installing the new restrooms over here. Some of you have been out there, you know, most of the power that was all surrounded by chain link fence and other strange things has all been removed. And what we need will be put on this building along with some future expansion. And then over the next couple of years, we'll finish off all those projects that were in the original master plan. We're only bringing this now because the cost in this equipment probably is going to go up twenty, thirty percent, because it's mostly steel, so.
Thanks.
I like the uniqueness and I, of the playground equipment we've been installing over the last couple of years, and here's another prime example. Something different do, we don't, we don't see the traditional teeter totter or the old metal spinorama thing that, so. But this is pretty unique and I think is great for the, for the, for Quarry Park. Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, do we know what the warranty is on this, this product?
Counselor, not off the top of my head, I mean.
Mayor and council members, I think we, on, on different components of it, like these would be typically like a two-year warranty, but we'll solidify that through the installation contract with Saint Croix, who will do this installation here.
Mayor, the rea-, the reason I ask is because if, if we do this and the warranty expires and the company no longer makes this product, we end up replacing the whole thing.
So, so Mayor and Councilor Berliner is probably, I'm going to guess, one of the top companies in the world, and they started out in the bridge business. So one of the things you'll find with their equipment is very hard for the average citizen to figure out how to take it apart, because I've been at playgrounds where you show up in the morning and the playground's disassembled and sitting in a pile. So they've figured out how to keep that from happening. And they use basically bridge-level equipment in the construction of these, so they tend not to wear out. And they have these all over the world, so they have a pretty substantial supply of parts. I know in Greenville, this was one of the companies they used, and they've been up for probably ten years, and when some parts broke, they got new parts or had them made. Berliner did it. I mean, they're a pretty high-end German engineering company and stuff's made to last.
Do we know what they coat it with so the rust isn't to the surface?
I believe all of this is powder coated, and most of the fasteners, you'll see on some of those things, they're stainless steel and then they're covered with a plastic cap to keep stuff from getting in there.
Councilor Contras?
Just have a quick question. What's the, the bottom right one? What do you play on that? How do you?
That is a thing where two people sit and they go back and forth. It's like the old, the mayor mentioned the old teeter totter, it's the new version of the teeter totter.
It takes two.
Takes two.
Trying to, trying to be inclusive here, so I think that's good. Other questions? Councilor Brennan?
I have a similar question on the, one on the far end with the holes that are sticking straight up.
Excuse me, what is that?
Be honest, Mayor and council, I'm not sure. Alyssa put this all together and worked with Saint Croix, so I apologize, I'm not that familiar, but. All very carefully selected with input from the PRAB and members of the communities, so. And it's stuff we currently don't have. I think we may have one of those circular swings that's kind of in the background there. Those are ADA accessible, you can actually lift off from a wheelchair, a child can be lifted onto that. We have, I believe, one of those in another one of the parks.
Good. More? More and less? Councilor Whitey?
I'll make a motion to accept a quote and award a contract in the amount of $146,158.75 to Saint Croix Recreation Fund Playgrounds Incorporated for Quarry Lake Play Playground Equipment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contras. Further discussion? Discussion? I'll tell you this, Quarry Park, we've really built up a, a cool park now over the years, and I think generally have kept it pretty low cost in general. It's not four or five million dollars as it was ideally years ago, but we have a, you know, mountain track, bike trail, we're getting a bathroom, we're now we're getting a playground, so really activating that, that space, which is good. Motion on the table and second? Further discussion? Discussion? Discussion on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. All right. Let's move ahead then. 10B3, the proposed fees for the rental housing program. Michael, thanks.
Mayor and council, we've talked about this for about a year, but we thought we'd bring this back one more time. This would be adopted by ordinance in December and be effective January 1st, 2023, implements the rental housing program, which has been approved. These are similar fees already discussed with council over the past year, meets the goal of the $150,000 revenue generation to pay for inspector and overhead. And the annual fee that you'll see includes the first inspection, so it might be a little confusing when you see rein inspections, but the first inspection's included as part of the initial rental fee. So single-family and townhouses previously owner occupied or not licensed, there would be a $500 conversion fee, which is a one-time fee. There's an exception, exception for homes that would have a CO within the last three years, for instance, for new construction. That's about half what most of the communities charge. The average is probably $750. $250 annual fee, and that includes the first inspection. The first rein inspection would be $50. Again, the second rein inspection would be $50, the third would be a hundred, the fourth would be 200. So the fourth is actually the fifth inspection. So if you've had five inspections, there's a, there's a problem with, with your property. Most, speaking with our building official, most things are fixed with the first inspection that's included the fee. If you have people that are on their second, third, or fourth inspection, that typically is a landlord issue. So apartment complexes with two to 10 units, $500 annual fee, $40 a unit per year, and then the same 50, 100 to 200 for rein inspections if they're required, that's on a per-unit basis. So if you had 10 units and you only had one unit that had an issue, you would get that in your first inspection, and then if you had to get it re-inspected, you'd only pay for that $50 for that one particular unit. Apartment complexes with 11 to 100 units, $1,000 annual fee, and then again, the 40, 50, 100, and $200 fees. And then 101 or more units, $2,500 annual fee, $40 a unit per year, and then the same schedule of 50 to 100 to 200. One of the things we've talked about developments were with 30% of the units that fail after the first year of inspections, the fees would double. That's pretty common in most of the cities if you have a problem property where they're not fixing the units. The cities typically double the fees, but that again would be at the discretion of the council. Annual fees double for a complex or single-family home found not to be registered. Again, this is pretty common. There are a lot more rental units out there than people know, so we will go through a pretty big educational program to make sure people get their license in 2023. And when we go around in '24, if there are people that have failed to rent their units, we will find out. It's interesting, we met with, we met with the tax assessor for the county. There are a lot of single-family homes that are currently being rented and people are claiming the homestead exemption, which is not legal. So they're going to be working with us and verifying rental properties versus people that are owner occupied. Properties that are new that develop issues through, sorry, for complaints or numbers of calls for service can be inspected earlier than the third year, so we would come back. If we had a new development, if you remember that ordinance, there were all sorts of kind of tranches of issues. If there were a lot of issues, they would not be exempt from that first year. We would be going back and re-inspecting units if there are problems. So lots of calls for service from the police department, maintenance issues. And one of the things, I talked to the building official, one of the expenses we'll have here is, there's nobody on city staff that's qualified, for instance, to test for mold. Your houses probably have mold that you don't know about, but there are some that are very dangerous, black molds that actually can affect respiratory issues. We would have a firm under contract that would bring to you that would go out when our inspectors would find that, they would do that test as part of this revenue stream to make sure that the residents are protected.
Questions of staff? I guess I just want to go back on the, so you're saying a homeowner, I guess from the auditor, that a homeowner that rents out his home, that does not live there, and then he files on the homestead?
So there are a lot more single-family homes and townhomes rented.
Yeah.
And so.
That's correct.
The tax, Scott County is showing those as owner occupied right now, and so they're taxed differently if they're rented out. So they will be working with us for ones they've caught and work with us for ones that we catch where they are not currently properly taxed.
And then if you go back to one of your fee pages, they.
Yep.
They seem to be, go back a couple more. I mean, I get the, the size and the moving up on that, but, so I'm going to get inspected, right? I'm going to have to apply, and then I'm going to get a, inspected right away, right?
So Mayor and council, I'll give you a good example. Let's just say Triple Crown, which would fall under the exemption for three years because it's new construction, but let's say it's four years old. That's 300 units. They would probably do 100 units every year.
Every year.
Or if someone called in and had a complaint, so we're, you all approved a change in our Tyler program, so citizens will actually be able to file a complaint online, so they don't have to come here. And then if that happens and a unit shows up, we'll send the inspector out to look at that particular unit. So he might have 101 units inspected during a year.
Okay, I guess my, I'm, I'm trying to get at that, if I own a fourplex, I'm going to have, and it's an older one, I'm going to pay an annual fee.
$500.
Yeah.
Plus $40 a unit.
And then you said on my first inspection's going to be built into that.
Correct. So we would come out the first year, there's no charge beyond those fees for the first inspection.
And you're going to inspect all four of my units if I own a.
Correct.
As part of my annual fee?
Yes.
Okay. And then the first rein inspection, does that mean then in year two?
No, the year two, it's, it's covered as part of your annual fee and that $40, so every year we come out and inspect. The rein inspection is, let's say you had a fourplex and only one unit failed because it didn't have.
Oh.
Smoke detectors, didn't have screens, didn't have working appliances and no heat. So we meet, you agree, yep, I'm going to fix all that. You fix all that, you're good. If we come out and you didn't fix anything, you're paying for a rein inspection.
I got that. Okay. Thank you. Councilor Whitey?
I heard a couple of things there and I'm trying to, so we got an annual or an initial inspection.
Correct.
Are you proposing that this inspector inspect, rein inspect it? I mean, we won't call it rein inspect as far as your fee here, but are they going to come back every year? Are they going to come back every three years to do this inspection again?
So it's a three-year license?
Yeah.
So depending on how big the project is, if you have four units and they come through and everything is good, unless we get a complaint, they're not coming back until that third year.
Third year. Okay. And then a follow-up, you had mentioned the one Triple Crown that 300 some units, 300. And then the, the one higher level was over 101 units?
Yep.
I believe it was. Any rough idea, and I don't want to catch you off guard, but how many apartments do we have that are over 100?
How many complexes are over 100? A, a lot?
A lot? Okay, I wasn't sure if they're that.
So Triple Crown's the largest at 610 or 12 units, but most of the projects that have come in, so Shuckabee Flats is, I think, 170, Arisans probably 140, 150. Almost all the new projects are over 100. Some of the older projects are 50 or 60. But today you probably can't make your mortgage payment unless you have over 100 units. So you're going to see, another one, 288 units is the new emblem that Lennar is doing. So that's somewhere between 150 and 300, I would say, is probably all the new construction you're going to see.
Thanks.
So the follow-up, we have well over 4,000 units right now. So there's a lot of units to inspect.
And half of those are, 1,700 of those units.
Are new.
Are new.
Yep.
Eight, about eight units. We'll have 10 new units totaling 1,700. And I, I say eight now, but two are in progress, right? We have one off of Canterbury, and then we have one off of 17th Avenue. Once those are built, that'll be 10 new units.
But.
1,700. and then we have one off of Seventeenth Avenue, once those are built, that'd be ten new units, seventeen hundred.
Ti- time is flying as we have funds, so for instance, the one by Hy-Vee, which name has escaped me, is going to be past its three years, and so that will be under the four-year program.
So, uh, more questions?
I had a follow-up.
Yeah.
So you'd mentioned four thousand units, now what's a reasonable expectation for this inspector? How many units a year can he get done, or they get done, sorry?
Um, Mr. Reynolds left, but the um original plan, which we'll see how the amount they get done that first year is to add a second inspector um in the, be the second year of the program. Most cities have two because they're on vacation or otherwise, and we're going to have some pro- I mean, I talked at length with both the fire department and the police department, that we're going to have buildings that have a lot of problems, and they're going to spend a lot of time on the problem buildings.
Okay.
And there's one right, right by City Hall that I know is a huge problem, so.
Other questions of staff?
Jim? I actually have a question, which is unusual for staff, but, uh, Michael, just so I'm clear, the license period is three years?
Correct.
So when you say twenty-five annual fee, does that mean twenty-five per year for three years, or twenty-five hundred for the entire three-year period?
E- every year you'd be paying twenty-five hundred dollars.
But the license itself is for three years?
For three years, correct.
So for the
And that, based on the ordinance for your staff person that wrote that, so that's to keep in that three-year kind of window, you can do the, on the bigger projects, you can do a hundred units and get done at the end of three years, but it also allows, if you remember the way this works, if there's a problem project that goes to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, if the person won't do the repairs. So they have the ability during that three-year period to recommend termination of their license or revocation of that license. That would then, if I remember correctly, they could appeal that to the city council.
Yes, I just want the council to understand that it is an annual fee, even though the license period
Is three years.
Is three years.
Yeah.
And that's pretty, pretty common.
Something like this, my three-year license is seventy-five hundred dollars.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, uh, que- Councilor Lehman?
Can we go back to a single-family home?
Yeah, let me see if I can go the right way.
So you got a single-family home that's renting out part of it, and the owner of the property lives in the upstairs or whatever?
Not covered by the rental ordinance, we made that exception.
So this is for a single-family home that does not have the owner on-site?
Not
Mayor and council, that's correct, and there are more than I thought, from the list I got from the police department.
There's a lot.
So that would be fifteen hundred per year?
That would be, no, it would be two hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Okay, well, I thought I understood that last conversation was the the annual fee is every year, so it's seven fifty
Seven fifty
For three years.
For three years.
Three years, correct.
Plus the five hundred conversion fee.
One time?
One time.
One time, so most of our houses that are being rented are being rented, I mean, there's not, you just didn't buy it, decide to rent it, they've been rented for a while, so that typically comes when, let's say you bought a new house in D R Horton, and your job in Minneapolis moved to Portland, and you can't remote commute, but you liked your house, and maybe you'll move back here, so you're going to rent your house out for the next five years. So you wouldn't pay that conversion fee because you've had a C O within the last three years. That's only a one-time fee, because it takes a lot longer in a single-family home to inspect it. So all you'll be paying on a regular basis is two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Period.
Okay.
And and that
Until three years passes.
Pardon me?
Until three years passes.
Yeah, then you have to renew your license for another three years. So, single-family homes, mayor and council are probably one of been the, one of the biggest issues in the Twin Cities, so there are a lot of large corporations that have been buying, we're dealing with one right now, um, and we're using the property maintenance code with the building official, because they had just about everything you could think of on safe, so we have written that property owner, because he refuses to fix the house, that it's an unsafe building, and he has thirty days to repair the house, because the tenants asked a hundred times, and they won't do anything because they're in Illinois. And it's a big corporation. That's been the big issue that cities have been having, is that, excuse me, some cities, not ours, but some cities have a hundred, two hundred single-family homes owned by one corporation, and they maybe have one property manager in all the Twin Cities, and so they never get around or doing repairs.
Councilor Lehman?
Yeah, very confusing, I tend to agree with our lawyer. When you, when you talk about an annual fee, you're thinking in your mind, I'm going to pay this fee, and the license says it's good for three years, and then they turn around, you get another bill, it's like, but I got this that says I'm good for three years, but you're not unless you pay this bill every year.
Mayor and council, it's no different than your plate on your car. You get it, you pay a big fee upfront, and then every year you have to renew that license. This is the same kind of thing, you get a three-year license?
But we don't get a three-year license on our car, we get a one-year license for a one-year payment.
But you keep the same license, is my point. So you, you would keep your license on the wall, for instance, for three years at your apartment complex and the rental office, but you'd be paying an annual fee for that license. But it's good for three years.
So what you're saying is it's two hundred and fifty dollars regardless of the, it's a, regardless of the term of the license?
Correct.
But there's also on top of it a, a three-year license
Correct.
That, that makes them eligible to rent.
Yeah, and the reason why it's three years is that if you've got a problem property, it allows you to kind of at least make an effort to get it fixed during that three years, or then it can get revoked.
Or I could take my single-family house, rent it out for a year, pay my two fifty annual fee, and after a year, I am going to sell my home.
Yes.
Or I'm going to decided not to rent it out, and I'm
Going to move back into it.
Move it, right, then I'm not, no longer in this, in this uh rental housing ordinance, and I'm back to a single-family home, or I sell it.
Yep.
Yep, I got it.
So the fees will be back as a amendment to the fee schedule?
Well, I think uh reading over the metro area in the last three or four years, I mean, I, it's time for our community to have this ordinance and, you know, accountability for the landowner, and actually uh uh outlet for our residents, really, because those are our residents. Um, and uh I'm excited about this opportunity.
Mr. Mayor, I think, uh, I agree, uh, so many times we get complaints, it's about rental property, and I've, you know, had my stories here myself, so uh it's, it's time to get something done, and now that Mr. Reynolds is in the room, I'll mention that I don't know how we're going to get four thousand units inspected, and even in three years. Uh, but uh, having said that, you mentioned we may have to expand this into another inspector. So I, I understand that, I a- agree, it looks like you've put some time into the thought on these fees as well, so um I guess we'll have to look at it again if it, if it i- isn't meeting uh our needs.
Mayor and council, that's why I will put it in the fee table, and then next year we come back and you'll be able to adjust it accordingly. The other, the other thing is that the Board of Adjustment and even staff, if someone, I, I talked to our inspector today, and if there's some minor violation, he said typically you'll waive, you know, a re-inspection. If someone's on, it's the middle of winter and they don't have screens, you can say, look, we'll come back in spring, and you can put the screens on the do- on the windows.
I have, I just have one more question.
Brennan?
So at, at the fourth inspection, that's at the point that we say you're
You've got a problem.
You've got a problem, okay.
And, and it'll probably end up either at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, or we'll be in mediation or something, because there, there's a problem. I mean, if it's only a couple of units in a big building, you know, they may have a problem tenant, they may have structural issues with the, whatever, we're going to work with them, but if you've got a hundred units and thirty of them have failed, um, for, be five inspections, that means you've got some serious problems. The other thing that the building inspector mentioned to me is if you have a um roach infestation or some kind of, you know, mice or whatever, typically you'll say, look, give me the contractor, and they'll typically, it might take two or three months for them to clear the building, so you don't go back in two weeks and go, oh, the building's not cleared, you work with that contractor to say, all right, did you do this, did you do that, what does it look like? So that our goal is to just make a better living environment, not to feed someone to death and not to keep re-inspecting them, but to work with them to get the building turned around, because it's in the best interest of the tenants. And the building owner.
Councilor Contrance?
Thank you, just so you know, I am in favor of this.
Um, the action, just provide feedback, have you received enough from us, or want
Yes.
You want some more? All right, and we complete on this subject? Um, looking forward to have this uh move forward. Thank you. All right, then we're off. Uh, let's move forward, ten B four, the Schroeder House presentation and discussion, I guess Michael's going to present.
And this will be a, a team sport here, um, I have Brian Aldrich with us here tonight, he is a newly named principal with Confluence um just this week. Uh, also, the one oh six group has been working on this, and Miller Dunwoody Architects have been working on this. So the good news um for the city is this um did make it through the National Register nomination process, and we're expecting that to be completed the end of this year, early next year, and forwarded to the keeper of the register. That's a big step, um, typically that can take years in Minnesota, and for whatever reason, um, they really like this project, and it was expedited, so we assume this will get listed pretty quickly, um, and there was
The shippost says it is.
A very long discussion with the consultant and the State Historic Preservation Office on the outbuilding that you'll see, and they didn't want to include it, they wanted to include it, we finally convinced them to include it, so that it'll be actually the sh- the actual house and the outbuilding are, will be on the National Register. Just for a little reference, here's a historic photo of the house um back in the day. Here's another picture, this is pretty much, except for the screen porch has been enclosed, uh, how it looks today. Give you a little context, there is the house back in the distance, um, you can see Saint John's with the arrow and the lime kiln, so this is what Shakopee Brick area looked like back in the day when they were making bricks and lime here. Here's actually things being air-dried, you can see the kiln pumping away in the background. And I show you these pictures because one of the things we want to incorporate into the buildings, and we'll show you some example, is not only talking about the history, but showing the history, so um there's some really good photos, like this one, um, and then this one. A little scary, you see the children that were working at the um brick company, but I think people just need to be aware uh of what went on here and all the history. Councilmember Lehman was kind enough to provide this photo, because I think it's the only photo that we've been able to find of the marina. Um, this is back in the day when uh the river actually had water in it. It's not how the marina looks today, the only water it's getting right now is from, there's a natural spring in there. Um, and I will just quickly turn this over to Mr. Aldrich, who can talk a little bit about kind of the master plan and zoom in on the house plan.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Welcome.
It's great to see you again, um, and I think the exciting part about, I think this project, it's, it's really one of the first projects that's coming out of the Park System Master Plan that we did a couple of years ago. Um, and it's also been sort of in conjunction with the cultural um trail plan that the one oh six group that Michael mentioned earlier, and Scott County, and also members of this team too have been a part of, so um, I think it's a pretty exciting um first project that could be implemented from that plan. When we were looking at this study, I think we had kind of three main goals, one of those was preserve, and the second one would be integrate, and the third one would be celebrate. So the, the, obviously the first one, preserve, is to really um preserve the building, pres- preserve the infrastructure that's there, um, and make sure that we can kind of control it a little bit and um do the necessary operations and maintenance, um, maybe make some improvements that actually bring it back more in line with its historical character. Um, the second piece, integrate, is really looking at finding new ways to bring it back into the kind of the, the public fabric, if you will, and let more people in the city not only just know about this place, but potentially even get to go inside and experience the gr- experience the grounds. And the third one, celebrate, is really just, you know, what a cool um historic feature that we have in Shakopee that's still there. Um, let's celebrate it, let's celebrate sort of the connection to the river that a lot of people were really interested in, the Park System Master Plan. This plan really shows, obviously, um, from kind of Bluff Street to, to the river, and we'll focus a little bit on the building in a little bit in the next slide, but a couple of things to note, um, is this kind of loop that shows up, um, that kind of circles around from the state, state trail and kind of doubles back on itself. Um, we're going to talk about programming a little bit, but we think this is a really cool opportunity, just for sort of dog walkers, um, visitors to this place that might be um from out of the city, to kind of just have a, a quick little loop that really um dives into the history of this place and gets some pretty dramatic views of the river, the marina, as, that's the first time I've seen that picture, that was pretty cool. Um, what a unique kind of space that you don't really see everywhere. So a lot of key features, um, that could happen, and I think we've identified a, a couple of key sort of moments along that trail for different types of interpretation, whether there's some, the old kiln that's still there that you can see off the state trail, fixing that up, cleaning it up, um, making it more accessible, um, the interpretive walk shows, um, some other drying areas that could be used. Um, we're going to show some examples of what some of that signage might look like um as well, but also kind of making it more accessible potentially, um, the marina, we think there's a real opportunity there for canoe and kayak um access, that's one of the things that came up in the Park System Master Plan, is people were pretty excited about connecting to the river. Um, unfortunately, one of the most dangerous parts in a fast-moving current is getting into a canoe or kayak in those areas. The marina, when it has water in it, is a, a great place to do that, and we've had conversations with Three Rivers Park District as well about some opportunities, they're excited about that opportunity. So it could be potentially a loop where you get in your canoe kayak, float down river to the landing, and potentially walk back or bike back or something on the trail, so a lot of sort of opportunities for that. And then just providing other, other ways for the public to, to be able to feel safe in this space and to kind of gather, um, it could host small groups, small education groups, um, there's a lot of opportunity. Um, I'm going to kind of zoom in on the house area, or the campus, if you will. Graphic is a little difficult to see, but we're just showing a, a vision of what this could look like, um, so you have obviously in the central part, this is the brick house itself, this is the outbuilding that Michael was just talking about. So a couple of the key improvements would be sort of adding that um historic fence that you saw in one of those cool images, um, on this front side. We also think there's an opportunity on the backside by the state trail, um, to maybe create a similar type of fence, kind of bring that vocabulary, that, that language back there, and have it be a little bit lower of a fence. Currently, it's a really large, six-foot um privacy fence, which makes sense when it was a, a single, you know, or a residential home, but that will really open up this area and really, like, people will see it from the state trail, so um I think it, it just kind of invites people in. A couple of key features, we think that um programming-wise, we're trying to keep this flexible, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but this might be an attractive, um, kind of an events area, small events, um, it could be smaller weddings, it could be sort of corporate group workshops, things like that, um, there's not a lot of spaces like this um around, and I think it has such a unique character. Um, so that's um showing a little bit of what this parking lot, you know, could support, um, this is a pretty, I guess, max-size parking lot. We could, um, with the fencing and with screening, I think it could really blend into the neighborhood. And then, of course, making sort of drop-off and um, you know, other key improvements for handling garbage and recycling. And then on the west side of the building, really an opportunity for a large kind of event lawn, this would be a flat lawn that could, you can imagine it having tents um at certain times, and could be pretty flexible for different types of events. And the workshop, we'll kind of look at the plans for these areas in a little bit, but this could also be a really kind of unique and fun, flexible space that could spill out into, this could be lawn, or it could also be kind of a plaza that could host other types of events, and, you know, you could see food trucks out here at a certain night, um, so it could host small group gatherings, and it could potentially um expand for the whole campus to kind of support different uses. Anything I missed there, Michael?
No.
So this is just what the architecture was showing, um, demolition-wise, you know, currently it was set up to be a duplex, so a lot of what we would, um, the improvements we would make would be turning that duplex into more of a flexible space. Um, and you can kind of see a little bit, what, one of the nice things about the duplex is there are two restrooms there, so this version is really showing a sort of a minimal kind of impact on structural and mechanical needs, um, and just creating a couple of event spaces that could be separate, you could have, you could almost have two events going on at the same time, smaller events, or they could be connected to have, um, host a larger, one larger event. And this is a, a little bit of a study that looked at, well, what if we sort of took the interior and kind of um made a little bit more drastic, um, I guess, improvements to make it a much larger space for events. Obviously, this would have much more cost implications, because you would be getting into structural, more mechanical, more plumbing, but this option is available, and then um the version on the left is kind of what we looked at in the last slide. This is kind of a, a study of the upstairs. Of course, it's currently, um, designed as a duplex, but that could be changed quite easily, so this could be another potentially an event space, but it wouldn't be accessible. Um, one of the things I didn't mention is the space, go back here. The space is actually really, um, accessible currently, I think with some just, um, minor improvements. It actually lends itself, um, pretty well to that, which is pretty rare for a historic structure and building like this, which is pretty exciting to the architect and our team. This is a planned view of the workshop, that's kind of that accessory building that we were, um, showing and talking about. There's a little bit more, I guess, improvement work that would need to be done with this building, but again, it's kind of, um, just fixing it up, making it more usable, modernizing it a little bit. And this one, we would actually be proposing to insert some things, like restrooms, updated plumbing, and things like that, that would make it more usable for the public. There's currently that garage door there that would need to be improved, and just making the doors and entrances more, more functional, more usable. Um, so this is kind of showing, uh, the architectural study and just looking at what some of those improvements or sort of operations and maintenance types of things that would need to occur. So, you know, fixing up some of the, you know, the tuck pointing on the brick, obviously, and, um, painting the fascia, but also kind of highlighting, you know, these flashing, the flashing that's on these windows up here. It's an improvement that somebody made in the past, but it's not what would have been done. It kind of takes away a little bit from the historic character of things, so that could be, um, pretty easily kind of fixed. You know, fixing a lot of the brickwork that's up here. I'm gonna go to the next slide, so this would be the east side, um, next to the driveway area. One of the things is that this brick has been stained at some point over the years, or probably at different points, so one of the things to kind of take it back to its historic, um, sort of interest is to kind of wash it. Um, it's kind of tedious work, but it can be done, to kind of take it back to that original Shakopee brick. And again, just highlighting areas that might need some improvement. This would be the, the backside of the house, the north-facing towards the river. Um, and highlighting that there are some, you know, sunken kind of concrete areas, and drainage improvements that would really help kind of preserve this for the next, hopefully, hundred years, um, plus. And then some sort of accessory stairs that have been put in for the duplex, just to provide access that I think could be redone a little bit more tastefully and historically accurate. And then this is the side facing that workshop, or, um, the west side facing Huber Park. And again, just kind of some improvements that... And the workshop, there's a little bit more work here, it's a little bit more rough shape, but, um, like Michael said, we kind of fought to try to include this, because we thought it was such a unique feature and really started to give the campus of the Brickyard a little bit more character than just the house. So, it could still be fixed up, I think, with some, some improvements, just improving the doors and a little bit more brickwork than in the, uh, the house itself. There's kind of a unique, um- Yeah, outhouse feature that, it's got some pretty interesting kind of architectural flair here that you wouldn't have expected to see.
It's the workers.
Yeah.
That's a cool part of it.
This is the, the west, would be the west side facing Huber, um, so a little bit larger wall, and there's definitely some brick, um, repair that needs to be, um, undertaken. And I think, this is the backside of the building, so this would be facing the state trail and the river, and this is, um, you know, Michael was mentioning those images that we were showing before, some pretty dramatic imagery and cool imagery. But this might be a spot for, you know, integrating some of that. So, this is an example of another project that kind of integrates that sort of storyline, um, so we could kind of create more, a little bit more of an artwork that celebrates Shakopee's history on the backside of that wall. This is just sort of a, a representation of some of the types of interpretive things that you might see around that loop trail that goes out to the river and comes back, just different ways, you know, that builds on some of the work that's already been done in the city. Just different ways for people to kind of interact with the, with the landscape and learn about what was here previously. It could be not only just, um, Schroeder Brick House, but, you know, pre-settlements as well.
So, our next steps, we, um, brought this to you a while ago, and we're reaching the point now with the National Register getting approved, that we would, um, bring back to you a construction manager's agent that would work for the city, complete the necessary working drawings, and start bidding out parts of this project. So, the first piece would be probably the main house, um, it's boarded up right now, and then we would bring, uh, those bids back to council.
Okay, comments, Councilor Whiting?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I know we're gonna look at the house first, I'm gonna start with the, the outbuilding, though. Um, it didn't look like you had any kind of, uh, components on the brick outhouse, and to me, that is a feature that, uh, I'd love to see, you know, even if we just had windows to make it look like it was still a, the brick outhouse. I think that was important. I'd like to see some archaeology done on the, the hole. You never know what they threw down that hole. So, uh, parts of that, but I think it's a, um, as a picnic shelter, I think that's a great idea, a combination, uh, utilizing that, uh, you had mentioned either a lawn or, uh, maybe paver or brick patio, I think the patio with bricks, I think, would be great for, you mentioned food truck opportunity. I know it's gonna need a lot of, uh, tuck pointing, I think is what it's called, brickwork. And I know, uh, with lime, there's a lot of concerns, uh, that that needs to be done properly with the lime cement and everything.
And Councilman Mayor, you can see it wasn't done properly.
Right, and it starts spalling off like that, uh, and then you also mentioned cleaning it, and that's also, since this is a, uh, basically a, a brick that's, it's not kiln-dried, it's in a shed with heat, uh, baked a little bit. Uh, it's really soft, and it, and if you break that patina, you're gonna have it spalling off for the rest of time, so you really got to be careful with that. So, I think if we, uh, bid this out, we have to be careful and make sure we get a contractor that is familiar with this soft brick. That's about all I have, right, for now.
That's good.
Yeah, the other thing Mayor and Council will tell you, so this mural is a technology they were actually looking at for a mural in downtown on the Lewis Street parking lot. You can see it actually can be removed, and the actual bricks telegraphed through. It's a pretty cool kind of label fabric.
I'm familiar with that product, and it, it can be taken off and not damage the brick at all, so I love that idea.
Right. That's a great way to-
Some of those pictures, I think, would be cool, both inside the building and maybe outside, so when people go into that, um, where was it, here? We were looking at, can you imagine that, a mural of some sort on that back wall when you came in? That would kind of really surprise people.
Frame the room.
Yep.
It's Schrader, not Schroder.
Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions, the trail that you showed going across the channel into the marina, I'm very concerned about the cost of that bridge. It'll probably be the second most studied bridge in the state of Minnesota, and the second most expensive bridge in the state of Minnesota.
Again, we're, we're not doing that now, 'cause I brought up the same point.
We might want to consider alternative options of having two separate things that people can do without crossing that channel.
I brought up the same issue, councilmember.
Yeah, councilmember, I think that's a great point.
Um, that's my first concern. I know there's issues with the channel itself filling in with, with silt. And, uh, in my past, I've worked with the past property owner and the DNR and everybody else to try to get permits to be able to rectify that, very difficult process. So, a very expensive process. And multiple permits are required, all of them are very difficult. So, any kind of kayaking going through there, it's gonna be a very low draft, because it does fill up. It's got a weird way of actually pushing it back into the marina. The fix for that, very expensive, so it's probably not an option. When I looked at the whole plan, I started asking myself, what kind of cost estimate are we talking about here? And by the way, that boat in that harbor, the big one? I can't remember the year this was, uh, I'd have to go home and look at mine on the wall, but that boat is a very luxury boat for the era of time. Down from St. Paul at the time. So, at one point, the river was more navigatable than it is now. But the whole plan, I asked, what is the cost of this? I remember when we first started this process, we had a conversation about, you know, we're gonna get these groups that have an interest, and get some donations going, and keep the cost minimal, and I'm looking at multimillion dollars here and saying, okay, where's this money coming from?
So, Mayor and Council, our, the only piece we're gonna be working on right now is right here, to preserve the house and the, uh, workshop for now. We'll have to wait and see, we did apply for a state capital grant for about fifty percent of the cost. Unfortunately, that got caught up in the budget, um, and so we didn't get it, but, um, we'll hopefully have a new grants person on board soon, and then it'll be another one we'll pers- we'll per- we will pursue either for the house or for the outbuilding, they won't do both, so we won't recommend that.
One of the, one of the other things that crossed my mind was that, uh, workshop area. And this is just something I've been thinking about, don't know if it's possible, don't know if there's any interest. But I'm thinking, okay, so we're talking about the history of this, this brick kiln way back in time, and, and, you know, if you've got people that want to do some kind of a tour program for a couple of bucks, how do you come up with a small kiln oven, small-type brick, and go through the process, process today, more modern, to show what they were doing then without technology?
Uh, DVD, I'll give you.
You know what I'm saying?
I got it, yeah.
And I don't know what the cost of that might be, if there's an interest from folks to see how that process... You're basically taking certain kind of muds, patting it together into a block, you're, you're cooking it up, going for your walk down a trail or whatnot, coming back and picking up your prize for a slight cost of something.
Right.
It'd be kind of cool, but I don't know if it's feasible. Obviously, I'm already concerned about the cost, so...
Uh, Councilor Whiting?
Oh, I can, I'd like to address one, but you know, community ed, I used to do some historic projects for community ed, charge a couple bucks, you know, through community ed, and they, they collected that fee, and I'd do some tours, uh, this would be a great opportunity for that. And I did think of doing the brick, brick-making for some community ed program, and that's why I got the DVD on how to do it, you'd need the proper clay, of course, but, uh, uh, it could be done, it'd be a great project, it'd be great for, uh, selling this history. Uh, you talked about cost, well, you know, when we looked at this, this is, it's not specifically one of our big ideas, but it's that whole cultural corridor, you know, was overarching kind of umbrella, and, uh, this fits right into that big idea and part of our, uh, our comp plan, so I think, uh, uh, this is a great fit. And you asked about funding it, well, uh, there's some COVID money that, uh, for me, that, this would be a great fit for.
Other comments, Councilor Lehman?
You know, and it might be, might be a better idea to have one of them machines where you can put your quarter in and, and the thing spits out one of them stamped pennies, and, and it's a, a, a brick, Schroeder Brickyard-type penny.
Get those all the time when I was a kid.
You know, and you make twenty-four cents on it, too, so...
Well, I think, uh, you know, I think Councilor Whiting, to tie this into the culture corridor, unlock our history, um, I'm very happy that we ended up buying this property, including that house. This aspect of getting on the National Registry, that can unlock a lot of funds, a lot of grant, more opportunities than we've seen, uh, so that in itself is exciting. And yes, uh, cost is, cost is always getting looked at, but, um, I think, uh, tie that together with hopefully some gr- bigger grant money down the line. That loop, the loop trail, whether the bridge or not, I think, uh, I think, I think people like to go on a loop, right? And if there was a day when this, the house isn't open and you're just a trail user, and you could just do, quick do that loop, i- i- it puts you close to the river, which we always talk about. Um, unlocking our rich history ties into the big picture. To hear that, uh, to hear that information a couple of weeks ago about the state blessing it, and then we can, uh, move forward on the National Register, I mean, that's... And then we can get an ID on price and then look at these grants, 'cause I watch a lot of this stuff that get, does get grant money.
Hey, Mayor and Council, I think one of the loops that we really haven't talked much about is this one over here, we own all this land. So, one of the loops, this is where the kilns and some of the relics are still here, so you could kind of walk out, at least maybe to here, and kind of see what that area is like. It's an old-growth kind of area that flooded.
You have that historic kiln over on the right side, about halfway down there. We would, we would work at trying to secure that and, and hold what we have, right?
So, Mayor and Council, it's currently, um, part of the DNR. Um, they have some signage there which they admit is pretty bad. So, I think one of the things we would work with them is, long-term, kind of improving the way that sits there-
Yeah.
And work on the signage in cooperation with this to tie it all together, because it's very odd to see this kiln there, and you really can't figure out where the rest of it is. I think the one slide that Brad showed, I mean, there's some opportunity. I mean, this is kind of what that area looks like, um, that we own, that's next to the DNR property, and to do some other signage that would be a little bit more interactive, to show, when you turn around, that's where the kilns were, we have pictures, so one of the concepts that one oh six group looked at is, uh, unbreakable glass where they put a photograph on it, so when you stand there, it actually looks like you're looking at what was there, so it would give you the context of some of those earlier photographs when they dug this whole area out for the clay.
Cool. More or less, more or less, Councilor Contras?
Just so you know, um, I lack the restoration knowledge and the historical knowledge, obviously, so I like to listen to both of our councilmembers, who have tons of it, and then I'll leave it to the experts who, who know what, and I'll just listen and let you know it's great ideas, yeah.
Uh, Councilor Brennan?
I like the fact that we're not only looking at the history of a, of a living, um, where a house person lived, but it's also the early industry of Shakopee, and I don't think there's very many opportunities to show that.
An innovative industry.
Yeah.
Um, do you need more from us?
Mayor, I think we're good, we will continue piling forward and bring stuff back.
I know some of us have been looking forward to this presentation and update, and I really appreciate it, thank you. All right. All right, what's up next? Uh, eleven A, the city bill list is in front of us. Any comment, questions on the city bill list that's before us? All right, seeing none, we would move to our liaison report, and I guess we'll start down here. Councilor Brennan?
Um, I attended Mallard's ribbon cutting, so congratulations to them. Um, I, when I was there, I had a chance to talk to a gentleman from International Paper, and he was talking about their difficulties getting unemployed, and I know that all of our businesses are facing that, so, um, just reminding people to apply at our local businesses and, and support them. Um, I attended the fire department dance, um, at Turtles, um, great turnout for that. Um, I attended the Scott County, um, uh, Committee on Mental Health, um, and they support embedding mental health, um, professionals, um, on police calls. Um, I also attended the Shakopee Shaco Lantern Festival that happened this past weekend, and that was a blast, and we had a, that was a great turnout. Um, the, the, um, the chamber did a good job on that and getting people, people there, and fun, fun. Um, today I toured the Xcel Energy Generation Plant, um, and that was good information. Um, and last night was the SPUC meeting, um, a crew of line workers on way to play to Bartlow, Florida, to assist with storm-related, um, damage recovery. And we also discussed, um, possible location for a water treatment facility in the East Shakopee Substation. That's all I got.
That's a lot. Uh, Councilor Lehman?
No report tonight, Mayor.
All right, that is fine. Uh, Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, MVTA met on Wednesday the twenty-eighth, uh, we had an update on our new CAD AVL, uh, system, which has been a couple of years in the making, but it's a automated system that kind of reports on the health of each bus, uh, not only its, uh, its systems health, but, uh, vehicle, uh, location reporting, GPS, uh, real-time signage of where that bus is and when you can pick it up, uh, route schedule monitoring, um, passenger information, event monitoring. So, in case there's a situation, you know, they can take care of it right away, you know, uh, problem on the bus. Uh, any kind of managing of detours is handled. Uh, it's been a, it's been a long road to get, uh, all these systems integrated and reporting back how we want it, but, uh, um, wanted to mention, uh, state fair rides were up, ninety-five thousand, uh, three hundred rides, uh, not the highest, uh, but- three hundred rides, not the highest, but second record. Also doing Renfest, that was a big talk, out of Marshall Road Transit Station, Transit Station was full, so they were, you know, coming over from across the street. We need to do better at marketing the bus rides, if anybody got any complaints about the parking lot from the Renfest, but it was the second year we've done the rides, the first weeks, first four weeks is average about four thousand one hundred rides, and then it's a, it's a three dollar ride, but you get a five dollar off ticket to the, to the Renfest, so, hey, it's like two bucks. And of course, Vikings Express rides from our Marshall Road Transit Station, first game was about two hundred and ninety riders, last, it was a couple weeks ago, second game, I think, was two hundred and ninety-seven riders, heading right to the, right to the game. I also attended the Mallard's Ribbon Cutting, great to see another restaurant in town, so that was fun, but that's all I have, thank you.
Counselor Whiting, thank you very much, Counselor Contras?
Thank you, Mayor, so on the twenty-first, I attended also the Mallard's Ribbon Cutting, and then twenty-first, also participated in our interview board to fill the opening that we had on the planning commission, which we passed tonight on the agenda, and then I also attended the mental, the Scott County Mental Health Meeting that there was, that they invited all the candidates and to go and, and hear the importance of mental health, and then on Saturday, on the first, I also attended the Trunk or Treat Downtown, which was extremely, to say the word, successful, I mean, the people, the kids, the lines were long, that's what I can say, and I know a group that had candy land, and they actually ran out of candy twice, so Candyland ran, ran out of candy, but they quickly refilled and kept on giving out candy. Thank you, that's all I have.
Counselor Contras, thank you very much for my mayor report, boy, a lot of this has been said, the Mallard's grand opening, you know, local metro business, family-owned business, great that they're here, I too attended the Shakopee Fire Department Dance, I, although I, I did dance. There was some dancing going on, hopefully no pictures from that, okay.
Video.
Also, I attended the Shaco Lantern Festival, and you're right, much like we talked about the Tap Twenty-two, when I go to these town events, you know, I, I try to glad-hand a little bit, and talk, and talk to the people, and where are you from? In every event over the last several years, at least half the people are not from Shakopee, and that just warms my heart, right, they're in our community, the folks from the Shaco Lantern, well, my community doesn't do this, so we're coming here, and they got their couple kids all decorated up, you, I come here from, 'cause you have an awesome downtown, that, it's just, that's, that's what, that's what drives our community, so. I also attended the Blue Lake Peking Plant Update, and they're having a pretty big project to update that facility and get some new stuff, and I would like to remind everybody that next Monday, the Shakopee Fire Department Open House at Station Number One, bring your family, five to seven PM, and that is my mayor report. Next up is our administrator report, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing for me, sir.
All right, moving on, item number twelve, other business, Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor, the alcohol ordinance for Sundays that the VFW is talking about, I'm missing exactly what.
Me, too.
Yep. Can kinda provide some color, commentary, essentially, the state law says that, I believe it's eight AM, is what, that can be sold, unfortunately, or for whatever reason, Shakopee chose many years ago, way before I got here, probably, I think when mid-eighties, decided to make it ten PM, or ten AM. If, if we would have recognized that the local bars were wanting to, of course, during a Vikings game that's being played in London, would wanted to sell alcohol, Bloody Marys whatsoever during the Vikings game, we could have brought that to you, and you could have allowed that to happen. Unfortunately, we literally found out about it four, three, two days before it was supposed to happen, and at that point, there was nothing we could do. So, it's an ordinance, it's not something I have the ability to waive, it must be waived by council, it must be adjusted by council, I would say, as I said earlier today, it, it seems a little dated, and, you know, of course, if council wanted us to take a look at that, staff would certainly look at it and, and make an adjustment.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I heard two different things, I heard at the beginning, it was a state statute from way back when, and then I heard in the end that it was a city ordinance, so.
The state law says it can be open at eight.
Okay, that's where I got it.
It's not matching the city.
Now, I'm wondering if, because years back, there wasn't Sunday sales, liquor stores weren't open on Sundays, bars typically followed suit, you couldn't sell a car on a Sunday, you couldn't shoot a squirrel on a Saturday, all kinds of crazy shit stuff, so we wouldn't be in any kind of violation by just changing our ordinance to allow, what does a liquor store on a Sunday, when can they open, are they limited on what time they can open?
Jim, you know more than I do.
Yes, liquor stores are off sale, I'm doing this in my collection, I think it's eleven AM, I think, so, but that's not what the ordinance that Mr. Reynolds is talking about is not off sale.
Right, yep.
It's on sale.
On sale.
And it's, I mean, I'll double check, but it simply takes an ordinance amendment, if the council has an interest in doing it, we, staff can put together an ordinance amendment, and you can consider it, decide whether you wanna do it or not.
If I, if I might suggest, we could simply say that, and I believe, is it Chaska or Prior Lake that has, the language is simply modified, whatever the state is.
Chan-Hassan and Prior Lake.
Chan and Prior Lake, so I might suggest that we could bring that forward for your, for your look.
You're correct, I was engaged with a local business on Friday and Saturday, and got some more background on it, and, you know, it was too late, we're not gonna, too late to have a special council meeting or anything in this, but this was an old, I don't know, restrictive blue law about Sunday liquor, off sale, and stuff like that, and ten o'clock, and with church and stuff, but, you know, the driver on this was a Viking game, and only, you know, in London, it's not like we play football at eight AM every, every Sunday, but, I don't know, if we went up and down the line to have staff bring it back for review and discussion, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, the, the issue is really Sunday, because I can go back to my third shift days, I was working at Chan-Hassan, younger guy, but I would stop back to Shakopee Bars after the third shift was over, and it's eight, eight-thirty in the morning, and that was my night.
Yeah, right.
Somewhere along the line of change.
Well, it was, that was during the week, and it was allowed, so it's a Sunday issue specific.
Sunday only, right.
So I don't, I don't see anything wrong with taking a look at everybody else's and see how it fits into us, and moving on.
Whatever, well, I guess I'm hearing, we'll come back with you, with a couple coordinations, you can decide whether you wanna do it at that time, get a little more background for you.
Build consensus here to have staff bring it back.
Can certainly, we can certainly do that.
Yep.
Any other business?
I do.
Counselor Brennan?
My term is ending on December thirty-first, and we need to talk about my role as the SPUC liaison, because I'm appointed by the, by the council, and I know that SPUC would like me to, to remain until April, when the regular turnover is, I don't know if that's what the council wants to do. So, we need to talk about that in the future, also.
Counselor Whiting?
As a member of the interview committee, I think those terms, the SPUC term doesn't necessarily fall with the city group's term, but I would, wouldn't have a problem leaving that out to finish that term, so we can at least interview and get, or at least plan on talking about it.
And if I may, just one minor correction, it is the mayor who makes the recommendation, and then the council approves that, so.
Well, I was appointed by the council as a council, as a member of the, as a council member of the board, so I don't know, 'cause I won't be a council member of the board.
But, correct, but, but it was, it was the mayor's appointment that was ratified by the council, just, just a procedure, a procedure.
The, the other point that I would make is, we would probably wanna find out if Scott County, if you're successful, elected at the county position, does Scott County have anything barring somebody on their commission from doing certain things, so you might want to check into that, and I, too.
Yeah, I think for many years, we've had an appointed resident be appointed to that board, but a couple years ago, at our purview, we were allowed to have a sitting council member, on, a voting sitting council member on that board instead of a liaison, and after the last several years, and I think we, I would like to see that, that, that change in policy a little bit continue, where we actually have a council member. We, you know, there's five board members there, we appoint the other four, but one of them is a, is a sitting, city counselor.
And, and that is the way it is currently structured, now, obviously, Counselor Brennan will no longer be a city council person, and that would cause us some issues, so let me go back and look at the language, and then we can figure out.
And you and I can meet, and then we can work on the logistics of this and get this issue solved.
Yeah, and I, I would like to comment that SPUC would like to have a council member on, on the board, and they support that, so, I don't wanna, I don't think they wanna do away with it either.
Okay, any other business, I guess I had one, I was called by a resident in regard to this garbage delinquent bill, and he got notice from the city that he's on this list, and then he immediately called Dix and paid them, and then that created a whole new dynamic, and I don't know if there's any efficiency we can bring to that delinquency aspect, and, 'cause it creates a lot of confusion for the resident.
It's extremely confusing, and a lot of the confusion arises because people don't do what they're supposed to, as the notice says, but in all fairness, if I got a notice from the city saying I was supposed to pay the city, as opposed to paying the individuals that I know I have the bill with, frankly, I'd probably pay Dix, and, and so, we had this discussion earlier on Monday, yesterday, and we've got to find a better way to make this work.
Right.
And it's, it's inefficient, it's confusing to residents, and we're gonna find an answer to that, one way or the other.
Okay, more to come on that, and thank you for that, you're right, the, the resident got noticed from the city, and then, I, you know, it'd be my comment, I kinda agreed a little bit, I said, well, I don't really technically, oh, the city, it's my vendor, who's the garbage, and the resident promptly paid that, and then.
So they didn't, they must not have got a notice from Dix?
Well, they, that's what he said, and he goes, well, that's, I heard that, well, that's the city, so I didn't, you know, it's, it's between a resident and their vendor, whoever the vendor is, and I don't, the resident said, that's the first time it ever happened, so I don't know if there was some disconnect, but here he is now on a city list, so, but more to come.
The, the process is confusing for us.
Right.
Let alone residents, so, we've always done it that way, but we're not going to in the future, we're gonna find something different.
Innovative, all right, any other business, any other business before this council? Sir? Out of order at this time, sorry. Thank you, though. Okay, Counselor Whiting, you have something?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, October eighteenth, at seven PM.
Second?
I have a motion to adjourn, and a second, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, we are adjourned at nine forty-two, thank you.